We will call this meeting to order. This is the February 16th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. Welcome, everyone. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Here.
Howch.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Kempfling.
Here.
Jerry Sims is out. He's ill this evening. Also present is Village Manager Patty Bates, Assistant Village Manager Melissa Van Zant, Chief of Police Dave Hale, and sitting in from Coolidge Wall is Kofi Semenya.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, I have an announcement. In regards to our proposed goal about restorative justice, there's a series of workshops being given at Antioch Midwest by one of the leaders is Raymond Ruka, Jenny Kopethwaite's husband, who's a Maori elder, and Wendy Peters, who is a native Hawaiian. And they're giving a series of workshops called The Trail of Understanding. Last Wednesday, they gave a workshop on restorative justice, and this Wednesday, tomorrow, they're giving a second part of that series on restorative justice called Assessing the Self: How Do I Embody Fairness? So, I think anyone who is interested in looking at Indigenous people ways of doing justice, and because most, or at least many Indigenous people had justice as a restorative kind of thing where it's restoring the community, I would encourage them to go tomorrow at 7 o'clock at Antioch Midwest.
Okay.
And can I just mention related to that that Mr. Ruka also said that if council would like him to come and present about restorative justice, as we're working through that, he'd be happy to.
Yeah, I thought probably bringing to the, getting my conditions mixed up, HRC first to talk about that is worth thinking about.
Great.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, I have a few. Are you going to?
I'll do that one.
Okay. So, first of all, I wanted to mention that I attended the last school board meeting to give information about the upcoming levy renewal that's on the March 15th ballot. And council was thanked profusely for our participation in the PBL project, and the students, you know, as we know, were super excited, but I wanted to pass that along from the school board. It was also really great to see them talking about their execution of their strategic plan, and I was very impressed. I did want to highlight the Arts Council member show that we are sponsoring as council. The People's Choice Award is happening this Friday from 6 to 9 at Cory Street. And also, if you haven't seen, this weekend is a focus on building, efficiency building with Community Solutions and the Resilience Network. And I thought it was worth highlighting that on Saturday at 1:00 PM, there's going to be a very innovative, they're calling it eight by eight, eight presentations about efficiency and building at eight minutes each. And then on Saturday, New Organ Cowboy is being shown for free at the Little Art. And there's a really great program at 3:00 PM at the library about home energy savings. And these are things that anybody can do on their own. Since we were talking about Community Solutions, I also wanted to mention their March 3rd open house at their new offices on Antioch College Campus. And I thought finally it was worth mentioning, we got a last-minute correspondence from Jessica Thomas, and she was thanking the HRC for helping to bring host speaker James Box from Ameri, Ameri I Can program. And she just wanted to, you know, highlight that it was a really successful event with great communication, so I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Next Wednesday, February 24th at 7:00, is a staff recognition, promotion, and swearing-in ceremony over at Miami Township Fire and Rescue. And I know one thing that they are extremely happy and proud of is that I believe two of the three new officers are Antioch College students. And this is their first in how many years, Denny?
Uh, since, well, years.
So, so, very, very good. We're also, there's also going to be a promotion, and Steve McFarland will be retiring after 17 years. So, I believe the community is invited to that. Okay? And the chamber is having our annual meeting this coming Thursday. If anybody is interested, it's at Antioch University Midwest. I think that's it. Let's see, what's, moving on to the consent agenda, it's a pretty big one this time. We have the minutes of the February 1st meeting, the financials for January from our finance director, the quarterly treasurer's report, Resolution 2016-08 Designating Judy Kitner as Village Counsel's Designee to Receive Public Records Training on behalf of each of the elected officials pursuant to and in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 109.43B and 1049.43E1, and also Resolution 2016-09 Authorizing the Sale During Calendar Year 2016 of Municipally-Owned Personal Property Which Is Not Needed for Public Use or Which Is Obsolete or Unfit for the Use For Which It Was Acquired by Internet Auction Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15D. Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is a review of the agenda. Is there anything we, we want to add or delete from this agenda?
We will need to add an executive session to the end or to discuss litigation.
I have a request regarding timing of the Environmental Commission report. Jessica D'Ambrosio, who's here, is going to give the report, and she lives in Columbus, which means she's going to have to drive home tonight, so this, the more.
Can we put her, we'll just put her first on the list. I mean, it's, it's coming out. Yeah, well, the council goals, though, could take a while. Do we want to move all of the special reports up in front of the legislation? I, I would be willing to do that because I think that that legislation could actually be extensive.
That would be a friendly thing to do.
Okay.
Um, we, I would also like to add, talking about the Village Facebook page.
To old business.
Yes. And are we going to talk about the request from Antioch College tonight?
Uh, I thought we could, uh, we didn't, it's under, we haven't reviewed petitions and communications. Let's just do it during petitions and communication, although, let's, let's add it. Let's add it to new business.
Okay.
Anything else? Brian, would you, are you ready to review?
I am. So, we got a very cute note from Mateo Basora, who thanked, this was which officer?
Naomi Penrod.
Okay. For being an everyday hero and saving his dog. We also, well, Reggie Stratton's letter, I think we'll, we'll talk about when we get to new business. We got the mayor's monthly report. It looked a lot like last year in terms of the statistics. Very interesting program happening, happening at the Air Force Museum Theater in commemoration of the Tuskegee.
Tuskegee.
Tuskegee, okay. Airman. This was the first African-American Corps of Pilots, and this is part of their eight-part Living History Series. That information, well, it's happening on February 20th. Bob and Sue Parker talked about how much they love Channel 5, and when it was down last week, they felt disconnected because this is a lifeline for them. And they talked about how much better things look, and the sound was good, and they loved the photos, and so, there you go, Susan. See? Good job. Energy Smart, we had a letter about the appliance recycling program.
Efficiency Smart.
What did I say? Energy? I'm sorry. Efficiency Smart. Thank you.
That's my error, sorry.
Yep. And NAMI is having, or is hosting, an investment workshop, and I think what's interesting about this is it's particularly designed to try to avoid fraud in smart investing. That's happening this Thursday, February 18th at 7:00 PM. It's in Springfield. We had the notice about the public participation from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. They are asking for input on their open space plan. That's going to be February 25th at 4:00. I think I covered them all.
Okay.
All right.
So, we'll move on to special reports, and we'll just go ahead and go alphabetically. So, well, at least we'll start alphabetically. We will start with Environmental Commission, so our Columbus person can hit the road.
I really appreciate it. I'm going to read from my computer. That's where all the notes are. Hello, council. It's nice to see you. Okay, so, the Environmental Commission, I serve on the Environmental Commission, and I will serve on the Commission through 2016. We had a couple of initiatives that we worked on during last year. One was an alternative to pesticide use in the village. And as a response to pesticide misapplication around the Gaunt Park Pool, we decided we would look into the issue of how we can stop using pesticides in our maintenance facilities. And so, in the spring of 2015, we began working with Beyond Pesticides, which is a national nonprofit organization that looks at a model of organic land management policy, and at incorporating that into a policy for the village. In the spring, we also, we had a presentation to the village crew, a facilities crew, a parks crew, and gave them an overview of the impact of the toxic chemicals, the impact and why it's important to look into organic chemical use and pesticide use. And we are ongoing in 2016 to try to set up a training and a presentation and education for residents to raise local awareness about pesticide use and organic lawn management. We were interested in the Glass Farm wetlands, Glass Farm property, and, and the beavers moving in and all, all the excitement that created over the last year. We did write a grant at the beginning of last year to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation that the council at that time decided we would not put forward. We did do a little more research and a little more investigation into the property at the request of council, and we were able to, working with, to come to Land Trust, we were able to successfully submit a Clean Ohio Grant. We found out of that award at the end of 2015. And what that will do is it will establish a conservation easement on approximately eight acres of the easternmost part of the Glass, or the Glass Farm. We will create an access road and some community gardens. We will remove invasive plant species and plant natives there. Those natives will include trees, prairies, and wetland plants. And we will also include a small parking area with some benches for recreation for local residents. That's an ongoing project, and we hope to have a lot of volunteer support, village support, and bring everyone to the area and educate them not just about the beavers, but also the importance of the Glass Farm property and recreation area. We have worked with the Resilience Network and the climate action planning that's been going on in the village. We began, one of our members began using the greenhouse gas inventory, ICLIES inventory. We brought that to council, and it was approved that we can, we can begin with that inventory. We are working with the Energy Board also to do that. So, we had a climate action planning kickoff meeting, which was attended by 30 villagers. We defined the emission scope we'll include in our inventory, and we are making progress with the inventory now. So, that is an ongoing process. And we hope to complete the inventory within three months, but it's, sometimes the data's very hard to get, so it really depends on how good the data is that we can get and how fast we can obtain it. But we're hoping that within three months, we can have the inventory and start to, once we have our baseline, we can then start reducing emissions in the village. Lastly, we looked at protecting our wellhead and our source water drinking for the village, very important. So, we started to take a look at that in the middle of last year and reached out to Ohio EPA's Source Water Protection Program. We were unable to meet with them during last year, but we were able to, as a result of some back and forth communication, we were able to update and approve our emergency contingency plan for the village, which was very important. Just recently, within the last week, we were able to meet with EPA again, and we are moving forward with the wellhead protection planning and updating that plan. So, look forward to that in the upcoming year, and we hope to have that plan updated by June, or at least by mid-year of 2016. And hopefully, we'll have that done before the treatment plan comes online or the plan is finished for them. And that's, that's all.
Thanks, Jessica. Any questions for Jessica or comments?
I was wondering about the ICLIES tools. So, you mentioned the template for the inventory. What are some of the other tools that we're going to be able to use for climate action planning?
That's a great question. And let me see, I have some notes here. I know we want to, we, we have a milestone to, to, within two to four months of completing the plan, to establish reduction targets. I don't know that I could tell you exactly what, what model we'll use to do that. We also want to implement some policies and measures after the two-year mark to kind of ensure that we are keeping those reductions on target and on pace. Again, I'm not sure what specific models we will use for that. I think that'll be part of our discussion. And then we want to be able to monitor and verify our results, which will be an ongoing process. So, I think ICLIES will help guide us in that.
In all those phases. Excellent. Cool.
This is definitely a long-term process and plan.
Good. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great work.
Great work.
Thank you.
So, we'll get back in order. We'll go back to the Library Commission. I see Carl Cologne in the back.
Thank you very mu, excuse me, thank you very much. I'm Carl Cologne, Director of the Green County Public Library, and it's my honor to participate in the Library Commission. As council is aware, the Library Commission was established by the council to advise council, literally just advise council, on the use of the library building, which the village has very generously provided, for 50 years now in our current building. It was a very exciting year in 2015. We had the 50th anniversary at the Yellow Springs facility. The village was extraordinarily generous and, and saw to it that there was a new roof on that facility. I cannot thank the village enough. I cannot thank Patty enough for her participation in what may safely be described as an epic roofing project. A lot of neat things happened. In addition to the 50th anniversary, we started with a, in a partnership with Little Art Theater, looking forward to the library's work within the community. This coming year, we're very excited that the Yellow Springs Community Library has been chosen to be the site of an Ohio Historic Marker commemorating the life and contribution to literature of Yellow Springs's own Virginia Hamilton. This is a splendid project that's being done through a series of partnerships, Village of Yellow Springs, Yellow Springs Community Library, Green County Public Library, Arnold Adolf, and then the Dayton Regional STEM School. So, we're very excited about that. Any, any true librarian knows what Virginia Hamilton has contributed to the world of letters. There are international awards named after her, and rightly so, and I'm just frankly thrilled that we'll be appropriately commemorating her at a library which, of course, has rooms that bear her name as well as her portrait. I know, I know commissions are supposed to produce numbers, so I'll bring a few to you here. In 2015, the Yellow Springs Community Library had 6,155 cardholders, up 7% from the previous year. You do the math, that means a lot of people have two cards in the village. We're very happy about that. Total visits were 114,492, up about 1 and 1/2% from last year. Total program attendance, and I have to say, this is probably my favorite number each year, was 5,207 folks, up 47%. We're on a programming tear, as the community is well aware. You were extraordinarily generous to the library. In our 2014 levy effort, we promised to do what you told us with the money that you entrusted to us. Our surveys show that you want more programming and more stuff, and folks, we're delivering, and you're coming, and we appreciate that. Total circulation at the library was 175,505, though I should mention, because of the way we get our download statistics, that doesn't include all the many items that were downloaded by folks within the village. So, actual, that very, very high circulation number is actually quite a bit higher when you include all the things that have been downloaded. We're excited this year. We're looking forward to, I think, smaller work than the giant roof on the Library Commission this year, looking after little things, working in cooperation with the Yellow Springs Library Association, which will be funding some projects related to the building. And that's really all I have to say, except one more time. Thank you very much. We're only able to do what we can do for Green County through the libraries, through the support of our municipalities that provide the buildings, that provide the literal roof over our heads and the ground under our feet that makes this service possible. With that, I'd be delighted to entertain any questions.
I, I just have one comment about the Virginia Hamilton marker.
Yes.
Well, I would like to take credit for it. I actually have to say it was Karen who was instrumental in getting that marker placed there, so.
I very much appreciate it. Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Wintrae very closely on that project, and we, we looked at a number of sites within the village, and, and again, as I mentioned, Mr. Adolf couldn't have been more generous with his time and consideration. And again, considering Virginia Hamilton statue in the world of literature, that he was so thrilled that we were interested was just delightful but almost mystifying. You know, we were like, come on, it's Virginia Hamilton.
And there will be a ceremony. We're looking at April or May, is that?
We're trying to figure that, yeah, we're still working on dates, but we're trying to talk about something in the spring.
And it will be a public, obviously, the public will be invited, and everybody will know, so it will, it will be a big celebration. Could you just say a few words about the Imagination Library?
I would be delighted. As council is aware, since 2000, November 2013 now, the Green County Public Library, in conjunction with the Green County Public Library Foundation, the United Way of the Greater Dayton Area, Soyn Medical Center, Rotary Clubs, and Yellow Springs Library Association, many other groups, has supported a work called the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This works in the field of pre-literacy. What we discover is, is that there is a whole set of skills that children have to know before they can be taught to read. The stuff that's so simple you don't even think of it as skills. What's a letter? What's a number? Or if you happen to be my children, that you read books and don't eat them. These critical skills actually ideally need to be learned by age three, and certainly by age five. A series of studies from everyone from Emory University to Reading His Fundamental shows that book ownership, remember, we're the library. We're the get books out and get books back. But we're talking about book ownership by children is one of the critical drivers to acquisition of literacy skills. Well, we found out that the Dolly Parton Foundation down out of Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, had had a project running for almost 20 years where they managed to lower the price on getting a book to a child, to $2.08 a month, and they did it annually for about a cost of 25 bucks. As your county librarian, I can promise you, you cannot stamp and mail a book for $2.08, much less buy it, stamp it, stuff it, ship it. The reason it's so cheap through the Dolly Parton Foundation is that she has established a number of businesses, including her famous dinner theater down there, the profits of which are paid directly into her foundation to reduce costs so that communities like ours can raise the money to offer the opportunity for every child below the age of five in our county to be getting a book a month, ideally from birth. If you do it from birth, then that's 60 books by the time they turn five. The books are amazing. These are Caldecott-level books. They're chosen by a committee of librarians and teachers. And the good news in Green County is that, since we started, in 2013 November, we thought we would have a quiet opening. That was wrong. We've delivered over 85,000 books to children under the age of five in Green County. We'll hit 100,000 books right around June, and we're, we're hoping to move the needle because we have a little motto with this project that we came up with, which is kids who read succeed. And our fear is, is that kids who don't, don't. And so, we felt that it was appropriate for the public library to be out there in front, leading the charge with our youngest children, whom we see in the library all the time for storytimes. And we're excited about this project and for what it can do for the kids in Green County. Also want to tip my hat to the Educational Services Center right here in Yellow Springs, who are helping us work with all the different school districts to make this program as widespread as possible.
Thanks, Carl. Thank you.
Carl, actually, I wanted to, I know, you know, over the past several years, there have been a lot of renovations to help with energy saving.
Yes.
And I'm curious, has that had an influence on other libraries in Green County?
Well, that's a very good question. It's worth understanding a little bit, sorry to get all arcane about this. It's worth understanding the structure of the libraries in Green County. We're blessed with the fact that we have but one library system in Green County. In Montgomery County, for example, they have four separate library systems, and there's counties up north where they have seven separate library systems or more within a county. So, yes, it has had an influence, but to be honest, it's, it's, it's because I've helped that, spread that influence. And we've, in turn, tried to make some changes that we thought were helpful. We engage in a contract with energy optimizers who we had worked with in a number of, who we have partners who have worked with them in a number of places, and we replaced all the lights in our buildings this year, including the Yellow Springs Community Library with LED lighting. So, we're burning a whole lot less coal to keep those lights on, which is something we're very pleased about. I was told that the savings is approximately 40 to 50% over a fluorescent light and more than 90% over an incandescent light, although we haven't had incandescent lights in the libraries, at least during my time here. So, we're excited about that. Simple changes like this make a huge difference in bending the curve on emissions, and of course, it lowers the costs for the taxpayers of Green County, so it's a win-win.
So, have you been seeing lower energy costs?
That's an excellent question. The lights went in in December, so we're just.
Well, but with the heating, with the change that was made a couple of years ago to the heating system, the windows, some of the windows that were added.
Let me check with Mel Brindley, and he can give you the best information on that.
And I just want to say thanks to the Yellow Springs Library staffs for being just so accommodating about the space use. I mean, so many meetings happen there, and it's, it's great.
We have a wonderful staff, and they're reflective of the wonderful community they serve.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Human Relations Commission. Can you get it, Nick?
No, I can't reach it.
You can just grab it right out of there.
I think he's just gonna.
That's perfect, right there. Hi, I'm Nick Cunningham. I'm the chairperson of the HRC. First off, I would just like to throw a little ad lib this year. Personally, for me, I've been dealing with a new disability. I actually have a name right now. I've been diagnosed with moderate to severe short-term memory loss caused by traumatic brain injuries. That just means I've had over 13 concussions. And it's through the help of my commission staff, oh, yeah, Steve McQueen, Secretary Kate Hamilton, my vice chair, and Chrissy Cruz, my treasurer, and they've been able to help me, help the group to succeed and get everything done that we've been able to do. So, I'd just like to thank them while they're sitting here. So, that's kind of nice. So, on with the report. Into 2015 was our budget of $8,500. We were able to work with and do approximately 20 different projects throughout the year, ranging from meets and greets when we had one, so people could actually come out and meet the HRC Commission, which was a first, I think, to when Chief Hale came in and we had the meet and greet with him, so the village could come out and meet him. And we did some conflict resolution trainings, so the police officers could learn how to mediate situations a little easier and better than what other people might consider a more aggressive way. And then there's other things, like when we had the International Fellows come and visit, we took them to the State House, and we brought them around, and that was kind of interesting. And then, of course, you know, a popular thing in town that we all do is the Yellow Springs block parties. We were able to help out with that. And over the years, it's becoming more and more popular. I think now we're up to twice as many as we had that year before. So, yeah, it's getting popular, like more and more neighborhoods are joining up, and they're like, oh, we want to have one, and we want to have one. So, everybody's like finding out what to do, and then to get to know their neighbors. So, it's kind of a, a nice project that we help out with. And then there was, we've helped out with the, excuse me, the Yellow Springs Kids Play House. We helped them. It was a project that I kind of got really interested in, speaking of memory, because they did a play where they helped with autistic kids, and one of the things we helped was, was to get these things called fidgets, and they help autistic kids calm themselves down. It's kind of strange, because in my house, I got one, and every time I see it, it reminds because in my house, I got one, and every time I see it, it reminds me of what we did out there. So, and then when people see me playing with it at home, they're like, "What is that?" And it's just for me, it's a reminder, "Oh, that's for these autistic kids here, it helps them do this," which was one of the things we wanted to do, was have something that people could pass around and spread the word, not just, you know, so it wasn't something that would alienate the kids, that only the kids with autism had it, so everybody could have one and spread it around. So, it was kind of a cool project on that end. We've also worked on self-defense groups for, with the, excuse me, if I got the names for a sec, the Ninja Self-Defense and Women's Empowerment Groups. So, that was with, also with the Boys and Girls Night Out, the Girls' Park, yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, because we worked with the Boys and Girls Nights Out, and with the Girls' Night Out, we worked with the Ninja Workshop, so they could learn some self-defense. And same with the boys, they, you know, working with their no means no situations, so, yeah. And also, we helped with the eighth-grade senior trip again. We were able to help them out in the scholarship-type ways, so those that couldn't come up with the full amount right off the bat, we were able to scholarship it out, so each, we were able to help certain amounts of kids on that one. We do have some projects that are still ongoing, like with the NAMI Green County, Clark, Madison Counties, wanted to make sure I said all of them. We continue to help them, provide support with families suffering from mental illness. And in July, we started up another group, was the Village Assistance Network, yeah, VAN for short. It's for local families that fall into financial needs or sometimes are working on different things. So, to help people out that might not have a backup situation, so it's just something else that the village can help out with. And another thing that we helped out was with the Boy Scouts Troop Equity Project, which my son, who's a senior scout, they were all part of it. And for them, it was like, "Why isn't everybody this way?" So, for them, it was just something we did, and they were proud of it. They, you know, it's like, "Oh, good, another color on our flag," you know. So, that was a good one and that one. And then, for 2016, we do have some upcoming projects. We are working on the launching of the yellowspringshelp.org, which is a website where you can go to and find help from different organizations for people that might need different things. The Know Your Neighbor Program, basically, so people will say if there's a crisis in town, like a power out or a storm or something, just a situation where you could have somebody go check on the neighbors, so it's not just somebody random coming up to a door knocking on the door. It would be somebody they know that's approaching, in case you have somebody with like a mental illness or disability, so they might not, you know, they might not shovel their driveway. So, if you see them in the snow, you know, it's a program to help them out. Also, the Chronic Pain Support Group is something I've found since I moved to town. There are a lot of people in town that have pain issues, and they're all in little closet pockets, and I want to try and get everybody together and start an open discussion and get people talking with each other. It also falls into the diversity discussion and reading groups, and also with the drug, community drug issue discussion. So, we are working on different issues for opening up discussions with, with town peoples, so. Sorry, I'm just drawing a blank here. That's one of those problems I have. When I get anxious, my brain shuts off. You guys have any things to add? Or are we open for other questions? Do you guys have any questions?
Do you have a process for evaluating, how you evaluate and determine the grant recipients, that's documented and that you can show the thought process that went into it?
We don't right now, but we're going to be working on that at our retreat in March. Linda Rudowski, who was on the commission previously, sent us a chart that they kind of used, because that's a puzzle that we have at HRC regularly, is, does this fit our mission? How does it fit our mission? Sometimes we really wrestle with that. So, that's one of the things we are going to be working on at our retreat in March 6, is getting some firmer guidelines on, on just that process.
I'm wondering if the format that, that council has for requests, financial requests might be helpful. I mean, I'm not...
I could get that.
I mean, that could be something you could share with them.
Yeah, but I would...
Anything that helps. I think, I think something, just to have something documented.
We do wrestle with that. It's probably one of the main things we have to discuss at the meetings, is, does this fit our mission? How?
And then it comes into question, like, what can we, like, when you have an issue, like, we can't pay somebody to do some thing, but we can, like, sponsor in people to do something. Like, we can't pay directly. And then it came down to, we're not sure what exactly. So, it is something that is going to be brought up at our retreat. We're trying to come up with a set guidelines.
I would like to say, though, that I've been very, I've been the liaison for, I guess, maybe the last half year, that I've been very impressed with the diligence that the commission members exhibit in terms of examining, does this project fit the mission, in questioning the person who's coming regarding the grant to get more information, and also in giving tips on how to write a better grant, or how to get the information out, or really sort of examining what the program is. So, that, that's been very, I have been very impressed about that. And, I mean, the kind of grants and the different kind of activities that HRC does, it's sort of all over the place, but, I mean, human relations covers a lot of different stuff.
How much of the 2015 budget did you guys spend?
We spent the whole thing, and as a matter of fact, I think we went $40 over. I was looking at the budget report this afternoon. I'm pretty sure we went $40 over.
What is the budget?
$8,500. It was $10,000, but last year, every department got us a cut, and we got cut $1,500, so.
Actually, I thought we had a little money left.
We had fewer requests from John Gudgel last year for the school programs. I'm not certain what was going on with that, but there were fewer requests from the school for grants this year. And Mr. Gudgel said it probably won't be that way this year again. I don't know what happened there, but...
I guess it wasn't as many as...
Yeah.
What were you saying, Patty?
I, I thought I remembered that they had some money left last year, and I was just looking for the end-of-the-year financials on my flash drive here, but I, I thought they had a little bit left last year, but I could be wrong.
You mean 2015?
Right.
Yeah, I did as well.
Can, can somebody talk about the Yellow Springs Help website and what the plans are for HRC's interface and interaction with that?
It's really in the process. There have been no decisions.
So, is it, it's not something that's, it's not an imminent decision?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Good work. And finally, we have a presentation by Springnet, Springsnet, on fiber optic network for Yellow Springs. Sure, that'd be helpful.
Good evening, members of council. Springsnet, as I think most of you know, is an ad hoc volunteer citizens group. Our goal is taken directly from the council's goal to develop and implement a plan to build a municipally-owned fiber optic network that will support all Yellow Springs citizens and encourage economic development. For almost the past year, members of Springsnet have been hard at work studying the issues, researching details of possible solutions, talking with officials from other communities across the country, and meeting approximately twice a month to just process our work. My name's Scott Fife, and I won the coin toss, so I get to be the one that brings the results to you tonight. I am actually very pleased to be here on behalf of Springsnet to present to you our findings, a suggested solution, along with a funding plan, which I hope you'll like, and to lay out the next steps for making this goal a reality, should you wish to do that, and we hope you will. This is by necessity a very high-level summary of the work that we've done, which is, of course, more accurately detailed in the 22-page white paper that I believe you've all received. And I will refer to that several times tonight. In addition, all of the financial scenarios, calculations, and methods that were used in that white paper and are included in these slides reside in a very detailed spreadsheet, which we'll be happy to share with you at some point in the future when we, when you're inclined to see those kinds of details, much too much for tonight. The connection between economic development and infrastructure is really pretty undeniable. Businesses of all types and sizes are requiring ever more bandwidth as applications like telepresence, which we used to call video conferencing, become commonplace. Census data from the year 2010 indicate that 10.6% of the overall village workforce, which is approximately 195 citizens, were home-based workers. That is a 35% increase from the year 2000. In the fields of engineering, science, and computer-based occupations, however, the number of home-based workers in Yellow Springs was up 69% over that same period, and this trend is expected to continue. In summary, telecommunications capacity is no longer a luxury or a nice thing to have. It really has become an essential condition for business, just like electricity or water. The village telecommunications infrastructure is predominantly made of copper wire from the first half of the 20th century, or coaxial cable from the second half, almost all of which predates the Internet, and virtually all of which was built by private companies motivated by profit. While advances in technology have led to skyrocketing demand for bandwidth, the relatively static area and population of the village naturally limits the demand, and with that, it limits the incentive for AT&amp;T and Time Warner to modernize this infrastructure. Meanwhile, the number of Internet-connected devices, which is currently estimated to be about 5.7 per household, is expected to double by the year 2020. Now, all of this supports the idea that today's telecommunications infrastructure is both an individual and a community need, which is worthy of a community utility to supply it. A recent survey that was conducted by Springsnet, and this is detailed on your white paper on page 16, showed significant dissatisfaction with the overall value of current telecommunications service, and with each subcategory, which included the speed, the reliability, the quality, and the customer service from both of the existing providers. It also indicated that there was substantial community support for a publicly-owned alternative. This is the exciting graph right here. This graphic illustrates the bandwidth capacities, the relative bandwidth capacities of common communications networks, starting with dial-up and moving up to fiber optic. Now, beyond the obvious capacity difference, fiber optic network offers a number of additional advantages, including, it's extremely reliable, it carries no electricity, it's not vulnerable to lightning or water, has no static, and is not subject to corrosion or cracking. It's actually, actually more environmentally friendly than copper and metal-based communications media. It is, as technology evolves, fiber optic networks are upgradable by replacing the electronics. So, the fiber stays in place, you get new electronics on the end, you get faster, better networks. And therefore, it would be state-of-the-art for decades to come. This map shows that while many municipalities have some fiber optic resources, there are actually 83 communities in the United States that have built publicly-owned fiber optic networks that reach most or all of their citizens and businesses. Of these 83, only 50 of them offer service with a speed of one gigabit or faster. Springsnet is proposing to you that Yellow Springs become the first gigabit fiber-to-the-premises community in Ohio.
Could we ask questions?
Absolutely.
Well, I have to. What are the, what, what material is, is used to make the fiber optic?
Glass.
Oh, wow.
It's light passing through glass.
Wow, but it, it must have some flexibility.
It does. It's very, very thin glass.
The other question I had is, I was looking at the map, it looks like Virginia, Virginia or Kentucky or somewhere seems to have a whole lot of communities. What happened there?
Well, I, I would defer that question to my colleague, Tim Barhorse. He did most of the research on this.
I don't know if I have an answer to that question. I would just think that certain states and certain localities have been a little more proactive, depending on the technology of various businesses in those areas and the municipalities involved in it.
It's impressive.
It is. We would be the first in the state.
We would. So, we're, we're proposing that, that Yellow Springs become the first gigabit fiber to the premises, which means every address in the village, every business, every home. Pause three seconds to let this thing can sink in. Okay, this, this table, if you look at the blue rows, blue shaded rows in this table, they demonstrate current levels of service and the average national cost for telecommunications by the two major providers, that would be Time Warner and AT&amp;T in Yellow Springs. Now, please compare these with the estimated levels of service and the suggested pricing for a community-owned fiber optic network, which are shown in orange. And again, our methodology and the assumptions for our suggested pricing are all detailed in the white paper, and we'll be more than happy to discuss those at length with you, but not tonight. The bottom line is that we could expect exponentially faster speed and better quality at a fraction of the current price. This proposal would benefit the entire community, it would pay for itself, and it would keep costs affordable for everyone. Now, time does not permit drilling into the numbers in this chart tonight, but we wanted to share our very conservative estimates with you for year-one expenditures, which shows year-one because that would include all of the construction, all of the equipment, and the initial operation costs, at a total that we think will really surprise, surprise many people. We've worked through a number of corresponding revenue models, and almost any way you slice it, the numbers work. We are very excited to share those models with you, again, in a working session, which we hope to have. Finally, the, the last graph here I've got tonight illustrates a projected fund balance using our proposal, again, with the assumptions that we've made, and three different subscription rates, which are also, is also referred to as the take rate. So, we're showing you 40, 50, and 60% subscription rates in the community. Now, for background, out of the 83 municipal networks we just talked about, the average of those 83 is 55% subscription rate. So, we believe ours is, is very conservative, and our survey suggests that we could expect an even higher percentage than that. This demonstrates that our proposal pays for itself in 20 years or less, even under very pessimistic subscription levels. And again, we're, we're very anxious to share all these details with you. We know that's not appropriate tonight. There are a number of reasons why we think this is really a great idea, and this slide highlights a number of the, the more important ones. We think it's consistent not only with the village history and our sense of community, but it also acknowledges that telecommunications is a vital public utility. While our small area and our static population make it less likely that AT&amp;T and Time Warner will provide solutions to our telecommunications woes... will provide solutions to our telecommunications woes, those same factors actually work in our advantage if we were to try and build a network ourself. The village is discreet, it's not subject to a lot of sprawl, that makes planning much simpler, and we think that's a big positive. Yellow Springs owns the poles, they own the trucks, they have the right-of-ways worked out, they have a mechanism for billing. Those are all huge factors when it comes to implementing something like this that would put us far ahead of other communities. And also, we have MAVECA, a not-for-profit, sorry, a not-for-profit public agency, which maintains a wealth of public resources, including expertise, experience, and especially high-volume purchasing power for Internet bandwidth. Many people don't know this, but MAVECA already provides Internet connectivity to local governments, higher education, nonprofit organizations, and more than 65,000 K-12 students in an eight-county region, right here in Yellow Springs. SpringsNet proposal takes advantage of this important resource. Also, potential small business opportunities abound in the implementation and ongoing support of this project. Village ownership of this system would mean that the village has another valuable asset, has a potential source of revenue, especially once the payoff period arrives. And most importantly, I believe, it means that we would make important decisions about the use of that resource, and specifically, things like, what degree of support do we want to supply for low-income residents, and things like that. In short, we think this would be a community network serving the entire community, and we believe that that just makes sense. Almost done. SpringsNet Committee believes that this proposal is both technically and economically sound, that it's consistent with village practices, and that it has strong support from the community. At the same time, we recognize that there's more work to be done. We therefore respectfully request a couple of things from council. We would very much like to be part of a work session with you where we can get into this in more detail, answer any questions that you have, give you some time to formulate those questions. We would ask that you consider authorizing an RFP to initiate an engineering study that would verify our preliminary cost estimates, which, again, we think are quite conservative, and that you consider initiating a marketing study that would solidify our preliminary estimates for subscription rates.
Do you have any idea how much either of those two things are going to cost?
We have estimates, which are included in your white paper. I'm not going to rattle those off the top of my head.
On engineering, it was 150 grand, that was just a gross estimate. If we could get a more specific price, we'd put out a RFP to do that probably.
Yes, that would be the main benefit of the RFP, would give us an idea of how much an engineering study would actually cost.
But the village would do the RFP, right?
Well, the village, I think, would have to issue the RFP. We're including the cost of the engineering study in our proposal, so we're not asking for village money to do that.
Yeah, do you want to elaborate a little bit on just basically how you guys are thinking about the funding?
Certainly. We're considering some form of revenue bond. I mean, we're not expert in these matters, we know that you have people who are. Some sort of revenue bond, we made projections based on a 20-year term, and we found those to be very favorable in terms of assuming even very pessimistic subscription rates, and we think we made very generous allowances for support costs and equipment costs. And again, an engineering study would bring some of those into real terms and make them less, not guesswork, we didn't do guesswork, but, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much interaction have you had with our staff who would actually be required to implement, as far as the billing is concerned and as far as using our lines?
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, that was a question I was going to ask, because early on, I know that Johnny Burns had expressed some concern about putting this particular utility on the same poles as the electric because of the access, and I wanted to know if those concerns had been addressed with Johnny.
Well, again, that is a key factor in the engineering study, is to ascertain for sure exactly what those, if we have those problems, if we have them, where do we have them, and what the optional options are for addressing those and so forth. We've, Mr. Burns, as I'm sure you all know, is a very, very busy man, and we've not been able to link up with him, other than he has provided us with the pole survey data, so we do have, we have, he shared information with us. We've not been able to have a meeting with him, which we would most certainly do in advance of any kind of a work session with you.
Well, but he did come to speak at a community access panel meeting.
Yeah, that's where he came, and he expressed the concern about these lines being on the poles.
But didn't he also say that we could work around that?
I don't remember that part. He could have, but it was a while back.
I mean, that's what I remember.
Yes, go ahead, Thor will talk.
Make ready for the poles is a part of any fiber optic infrastructure project where, you know, aerial installations occur. Part of the engineering study would allow the examination of every single pole, every single attachment. It would ensure that the proper spacing between cables was adhered to, and we very much want to do that engineering study and collaborate with Johnny at the same time on that, so that we're certain that we're making, you know, taking into account everything with respect to poles and construction projects.
And are there other alternatives besides putting it on the pole?
Absolutely. Buryal is, of course, the other option, and there's also a technology called microtrenching, which is very popular in Europe, where they actually put a very, they take a, effectively it's a saw blade, but they very slice down, it's a slice down the street, and there's a certain kind of fiber optic cable that goes perfectly in that crack, and then they just seal it right back over. And it's very unobtrusive methodology. So there's really three primary methods that we will be looking at for fiber optic installations.
One of the communities we were in touch with, Sandy, Oregon, has done a similar project, and they just completed it this last year. They did the whole network underground, and it was a whole lot more difficult there because they have very rocky soil compared to what we have here in Yellow Springs. So going underground here would be easier.
Did I hear you allude to the fact that the costs for the engineering studies would not be borne by the village?
We have those built into our...
So they would be borne by the village?
No, those are built into our project proposal. That would be part of the funding of the project itself.
But we would have to come up with a funding for the studies.
Before we...
I would assume something like that would have to happen, yes.
And if the studies didn't prove, didn't...
I believe that's correct.
Prove viable, then that would be money.
That's correct.
And regarding staff, besides Johnny Burns, you guys have also been, Melissa Van Zandt's been quite involved, right?
Melissa's been very involved and has been most helpful to us.
Are there not potentially community partners that could contribute to some of the studies? Are there people, other people who will benefit from this, other people that will potentially financially benefit that could be involved in helping to fund the engineering?
I believe there are probably all kinds of possibilities in that regard. We actually discussed a number of ideas that were a little more unusual to get this thing off the ground. Again, that's probably something that we would just want to, more than likely, that's a little bit out of our pay grade, I guess, is the gist of what I'm trying to say here. We made assumptions and we built projections based on our limited knowledge of how that sort of thing works, with advice from Melissa, and we understand that you're the ones that will have to make the hard decisions, and so we didn't want to get too far out there.
Although, I mean, what you're asking of our staff, of council and our staff, is an incredible amount of work and an incredible amount of financial investment that, as far as I know, our staff is already maxed. So I'm just, I'm concerned, you know, I think we were looking for SpringsNet to bring that expertise to us, and not for us to have to reinvent the wheel here.
Okay, I...
Karen? Aren't you talking about doing, making requests to do a work session with us?
Yes.
So it just seems to me that...
Yes, that's our primary request.
This kind of discussion would be something for a work session.
That's what I was going to ask. I mean, how far is this discussion tonight going? What's the process by which, you know, we're trying to get enough information?
I guess what I'm trying to let them know is what I'd like to know. I mean, what I'd like them to come prepared to a work session to talk about is that, is tools for our staff, how the village can take on an entirely new utility, and exactly how this is...
I mean, I think part of what we need to understand is how other communities did this, and the kind of challenges that they faced, and, you know, are there, I mean, I would want to know, did, in some of these other communities, did they run into problems they didn't expect? What were those problems? You know, was it all, I mean, it's a great concept, but I want to know more concretely, these 80 communities, I don't know how, I don't know when communities started doing this, how many years out it is that communities have had experience with their municipal system, and sort of, you know, we should be able to learn from that. We're not going to be the first, so we should be able to learn from that. And I would want that, I would want a lot more information about that, because that's going to tell us what we may run into, the good things and the bad.
Right, I don't think we need to be sold on this as a project. I mean, I think it's undeniable that having fiber in Yellow Springs would be incredible, it would be incredible for economic development, it would be incredible for the community. So I don't need the whole front end of the stuff to sell me on the project. I need to understand how we're going to afford it, and I need to understand how we're going to administer it, how, just exactly how this is going to work in Yellow Springs.
Thank you, and we have done a lot of work on that.
And the take rate.
We have a number of multiple scenarios that we would be happy to discuss with you, including all kinds of options for how it gets staffed, how it gets supported, combinations of public-private, you know, partnerships and contracts.
I mean, one thing I'm thinking about is, you know, we're going to be finalizing our goals tonight, and so this work sessions that's being requested, you know, partly we need to think about, well, what are all our priorities, and where does that fit in in terms of timeframes?
Right.
So I feel like, rather than trying to commit to something at this moment, we need to first finalize our goals and understand, you know, where are the priorities there, and what kind of workload are we talking about, and then we can kind of figure out when to fit that work session in.
I would add, there are many companies that would be willing to assist or even take over most of these duties from the staff, so I don't think the village would necessarily have to take on a lot of these responsibilities as far as designing the network, determining the type of funding and all that. There are resources available, now, a lot of them, you know, that have been used by other municipalities. Again, we've been in close contact with Sandy, Oregon, and several of the contractors that work with them, and they've done, you know, detailed engineering studies already, so this has been done in the past. There's lots of examples out there.
I mean, I think, I agree with Judith. I think, you know, at some point, when we do agenda planning at the end of the meeting, well, I don't know if we'll talk about it tonight, but I think you're hearing from all four of us that obviously, that absolutely a work session is fine. I mean, I'm absolutely willing to have a work session. I think how it works into our schedule, how it works into the rest of the goals for 2016 is what we're going to have to work on. And I guess what you would hear from that is that, you know, the more that is brought to us, the easier it is. And I guess I will say one more thing, if we're, since I think we're going forward, is that there has been some question of a potential conflict of interest around this, and I'd like to make sure that that is resolved before it comes back to council.
Just to wrap up, we would like to encourage members of council, as well as the entire community, to visit the website that we've set up. We're assembling a fairly large body of educational material about this kind of a project, what it's, what's involved, the very kinds of questions you asked me earlier, how does this work? We want everybody to know as much as possible about all this, and we believe that as people learn about it, they'll agree with us that it's a great idea and that we're just the people to do it.
I'd like to say, I really would like to thank you all for all the work you've been doing. I mean, I read the whole thing, and, you know, I didn't really understand much about it before at all, so I, I mean, this is a great document. Thank you, thanks for everything you've done.
Very complete. And yeah, I mean, just to underscore what Scott just said, you know, one resource is the Fiber Forum that Karen and I attended, that happened, you know, early last year, and that was where we brought in a lot of speakers, some of them, you know, over the web, and that's all accessible as well. And they shared their successes and their surprises, and it was a very balanced presentation, so.
All that video is available on the website.
Right.
Yeah, I wanted to say too, we maybe sounded a little unfriendly in response to all this, I hope we didn't, but just, I think we're going to need more information, we just have to figure out where to fit in the schedule, but I appreciate the work that's been done, and it's, if we can make this happen, it would be fantastic.
We look forward to answering your questions, every one of them.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot.
It looks like the whole committee's here, so we appreciate it. Next, we'll go back and pick up the public hearings and legislation, Resolution 2016-07. I'm not even going to have, Judy, why don't you read it in by title?
Yes, this is adopting Village Council annual goals for 2016.
Okay, so at the last meeting, and I believe, I'm not sure, but at the last meeting, we kind of went through the ones that were there, and I believe that at least, I'm hoping that the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, are basically what was there before, modified and changed per our discussion at the last meeting. I hope I got everything right on the changes that were to be made.
1, 2, 3.
So it's basically everything before village justice system.
Did you want to talk about anything else?
Well, I mean, I thought, I felt like we talked about them at the last meeting, really. We, and basically, all that it was was some editing to, we actually eliminated two or three of them that we didn't feel that we either, either had they been completed, or we put them, we folded them into a different one. So the water projects, we basically, the water project's basically going to revolve around the plant itself, constructing a plant, and the wellhead protection plan, which has already been acknowledged by Environmental Commission, create a sustainable economic development strategy. I think that some of the activities may be slightly different. We update and or develop ED tools, including the Economic Development revolving loan fund and incentive policy, property inventory and web presence, these are things that we've talked about at the Economic Sustainability Commission, develop a plan to address business expansion needs, and this was, I think, left over from the last time, update comprehensive land use plan and economic sustainability plan is necessary to meet goals. I think, I think that before it said, update both of them, and I think that that maybe was a little more than we needed to have in there.
As necessary is good.
So, and then develop a strategy for fiscal sustainability. We rolled the property tax into that, which we have a separate passage of property tax levy, consider additional revenue options, develop a capital plan for village assets, and then we also have included the best use of village-owned property on that. Sidewalk repairs and construction, I added complete downtown streetscape, but basically the analysis and recommendations from staff, which includes an analysis of the sidewalk system itself, and recommendations for how we fund, how we fund the projects.
And I just added that council needs to approve a plan for the sidewalk. I mean, we've had recommendations and we've had analysis, but council so far hasn't come up with a plan. I mean, we've had recommendations, and we've had analysis, but council so far hasn't come up with a plan.
So just, just add council.
Council approval of a plan for sidewalk repair.
Of, of implementation and funding strategy?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The goal should probably be the approval of the plan, and the, the strategy and funding would be the method for implementation.
You know, we really have had the analysis and recommendations from staff, because we got a report from John, and we also had some, some financial input from Melissa, I believe. So do we wanna take out analysis and recommendation from staff, and just say council approval of implementation strategy and funding?
Sounds good, Matt.
Okay. And then work with community organizations, commission and staff, to develop a plan to reduce energy use and increase environmental sustainability. All that I had there was develop village solar project, I don't know if there was.
I have something from the Environmental Commission.
Okay.
Which would be, what's that second, under anticipated results, environmentally friendly landscaping, let's see. The Environmental Commission is going to be putting forward sometime this year, options for an ordinance, and then educational materials on how people can have environmentally friendly and climate-friendly landscaping, so, however, however that could be worded as a result.
But, but that's
And then the
I don't know if that's a council goal, though, I mean, it's not a council goal yet, because we haven't been presented with it.
That's true, okay.
I mean, it seems like, I, I would, it feels like we probably do, based upon what environmental and energy board you're doing, seems like we probably do have something more that concrete to put under this, what I would consider the sustainability goal, besides just the solar project, I'm not sure. I mean, some of the work that the resilience
Right, well, I mean, this is a work
Climate Action Plan, for example.
Right, continue work on Climate Action Plan.
Right. And, I mean, I, I always think of these as a work in progress, so we should be able to add things.
True. Okay, next, we've got develop and implement a plan and proof of concept to build a municipally-owned fiber optic network that will support all Yellow Springs citizens and encourage economic development. You know, we've got the, I think we, we all know what the, what the, what we hope to attain, the anticipated results. Encourage collaboration between Springsnet and CAP, that is probably something that needs to be developed a little bit farther. And I'm not sure, Brian, do you have?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, what's happened is Springsnet has just taken this on. So, I mean, I guess what, what we talked about at the last Community Access Panel meeting was that if we do move forward with this, that maybe the panel has a role in oversight to help council. But at this point, I don't think CAP does have a role. I mean, I think this is Springsnet bringing it to us, and then, you know, but maybe, maybe adding the work session, I don't know. I mean, I think that should definitely happen.
So, I mean, so it seems to me that encourage, that that goal, or that that, that action isn't, doesn't apply at all, so what would you,
Yeah.
what would you consider the appropriate action?
So I, I think it's, sounds like it's work session, and then it's, we need to do, I, I guess we've been given some recommendations that seem to make sense, the engineering study and possibly the marketing study. I mean, at least considering those actions to test viability.
Work session with Springsnet to consider or discuss next steps.
Yep. And then maybe consider engineering and marketing studies.
I mean, I, I do have to say that, that the goal of developing and implementing a plan and proof of concept, it may be a bit, it may be jumping us ahead, a step.
You have to first decide.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we have our goal, our goal is ahead of our actions.
Well, maybe, maybe the word implement is the problem, 'cause, you know, plan and proof of concept, I think the idea was that we could see it on paper.
Proof of concept, what does that mean?
It means that
You prove that the concept
That'll work, that's the viability thing.
That should be maybe the first question, the thing that should be listed, you know, first that has to happen before you develop a plan, right? Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that develop a proof of concept may cover it, I mean, there's, there's a plan embodied in that for sure, so.
Well, I, I mean, it seems like it's more about, it's just exploring, exploring the idea, exploring creating or developing a fiber optic network in Yellow Springs, that seems like that's what we're doing.
Say it again.
We're just exploring
Exploring, yeah, I like that.
The development of a fiber optic network in Yellow Springs.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Personally, I don't wanna lose the proof of concept, 'cause it's more of an action, I mean, we've been exploring it for
Well, then let's put, let's put the action, let's put that action over under the action items.
Okay.
So explore development of a municipally-owned fiber optic network that will support all citizens and encourage economic development.
It, one of the anticipated results, reduced cost via efficiency, I'm not quite sure what that means, is that meaning it's gonna reduce the cost of the service to citizens because of?
Well, yes, because village services
Because it's right here.
Yeah, and part of that would be, for example, our police department, you know, is connected into the internet. So if we had cheaper, you know, better internet, that would be one area of efficiency. Same for our remote reads and all the other activities that are sort of in this sort of smart, smart city planning, smart village. So that, that is what that referred to.
Okay.
Yeah, and educational opportunities, by the way, are there, because the schools have highlighted on many occasions how important it is to their students, as, as they, you know, need to have access to
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, that's an easy one to understand. So is it, is it develop a proof of concept, or is that, does that, is that the right wording under the actions?
Yeah.
Okay. And does that, is that, is the proof of concept, is that mostly about ensuring that it's financially viable, or does that include operationally viable?
Both.
Okay.
Both.
Okay. Okay, Springsnet, so are you saying Community Access Panel is out of this completely, or is this just gonna be?
Yes, so that is the resolution to the potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Is, it just, at this point, Community Access Panel doesn't need to have a role in this, 'cause Springsnet's really taking it on. But I, I think, you know, moving forward, you know, if we really did do this, I do wonder if we'd want some kind of oversight, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, well, I will, so if we're, if we're, and, and you'll notice that I removed the, the ranking column, and I, I thought that that's what we decided, in my view, the order in which they're placed is, is more a matter of expediency than, than anything else. So I'm, you know, I, I would be satisfied to just leave them, and it doesn't mean anything, say anything about the, the last two, other than they were the last two, so I'll just turn those over to the two of you to discuss.
Okay, I'll, I'll discuss the village justice system review and update. Mary Ann and I talked about it, but I did most of the work on it, and I did reach out to the mayor, though I didn't get a chance to talk with him, and had a conversation with Chief Hale. It was very pleasant, and just to, you know, keep them in the loop regarding this, since it involves their areas of acti, of work. So just to read it out, the first column there, so the, the goal is village justice system review and update. And then anticipated results, stronger, more effective mayor's court that incorporates restorative justice principles and has an increased referral rate from the YSPD. Strengthened public trust in the Yellow Springs Police Department across race, age, and income groups. Increased public understanding of the Yellow Springs Police Department policy and practice. Updated police department policy to reflect best practices and community values. Those are the anticipated results. Activities required, we're recommending that the village council create a village justice system task force to research and develop recommendations regarding the following, the, the mayor's court, restorative justice practices, the YSPD practice and policy, new developments in municipal policing that address institutional racism, and the last one, alternative municipal policing approaches to drug control. The timeframe that's being proposed is 2016 to 2018. The person responsible, the village council, the justice system task force, and Patty as our village manager. And the resources, the village council, human relations commission, the village solicitor, Mayor Fobert, Chief Hale, the village mediation program, you, the US Department of Justice, and initiatives in other communities, and I think at the top, I had had the justice system task force as a resource as well, so I don't know if that needs to be there, so that is the proposal.
So I guess for consistency, I mean, just a small point, but council and the task force, maybe we don't have to have in the last column.
Okay.
I mean, I, and I would think that Mayor Fobert and Chief Hale would be more than resources, that they're more than resources, that they're gonna be responsible, it's their, their departments that we're talking about. So they're gonna be responsible for implementing whatever's decided.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure what those columns exactly.
Right.
The only other thing is because it, the last, the last two, well, it's really not important as much as the, there are a couple of things related to the PD where the goal is, talks about the justice system, and I know that maybe I'm reading, I know that, that when it comes to justice, that, that Chief is very, always talks, that's not the police department's role, the police department is public safety, it's not metting justice. So I'm wondering if we should expand the goal, or say the goal differently or something, to separate out the mayor's court restorative justice piece from police policy and policing issues.
Maybe, when we, when I looked, when I looked it up, criminal justice system, you know, it, if you look it up, it's considered part of the, the, the police department's considered part of the criminal justice system, what I looked up, anyway. But Mary Ann and I both thought that criminal justice system sounded a little harder than maybe we wanted to describe it, but
Well, I think, probably, I don't know that we've actually had that type of discussion with Chief since Judith has been back on council. So maybe Chief, you can explain just briefly how you see that, just so Judith can understand what Karen's trying to say, that the police department doesn't meet out justice.
Yeah, go ahead.
Here, I, I mean, I think there's, and Judith and I talked, and I think there are situations, I think the police department has to be aware of, that they would be a great fit for sending to the restorative justice system, again, from, I, I think technically, my job is not justice, it's, it's not for me to find guilt and be judgmental.
Right.
Our job is to report it, if you're a victim, and you want to report that someone has assaulted you, our job is to take that report. It would then be Mayor Fobert's or the judge's responsibility to find a resolution to that if you, as a victim, are amenable to it, so that's sort of, I think where we're at. I, I do think that the police department can be aware of, you know, certain situations probably lend themselves more to restorative justice than other things where there's truly an assault or something, a criminal damaging, et cetera. And in that way, I think we can develop policies that would be helpful in that.
I think what I'd suggest is, is that, we almost just draw a line across almost the middle of that, and put it into two separate goals. So separate out the policing.
Well, but the
Can you make them sub-goals?
Say it again? I'm just looking up criminal justice system, I mean, it says, the system of law enforcement that is, criminal justice system, the system of law enforcement that is directly involved in apprehending, prosecuting, defending, sentencing, and punishing those who are suspected or convicted of criminal offenses.
I think the difference, I think the difference is you're looking at it as a system, and Karen's looking at it as parts of a system. So you're, when you, when you made your goal, you made it as an, as the entire system, the mayor's court and
Yeah, and the part of the reason for that is because we wanted the task force to be looking at both, and we saw them as
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the difference, is, 'cause you're, you're going back to what the chief said about, it's not the police's
Right.
job to meet out.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that the apprehending, or, you know, that's
That's still part of the system.
It's part of, yeah, so it's, that's the way I was thinking about it.
I'm wondering if we could just enlarge the title of it and say, village justice and public safety system. If, if the chief, or if people feel that public safety captures the PD part of the equation.
I think if you look at it as, as a system, I, I think justice, village justice system encompassed as the entire system, I don't think the chief has a problem with that.
Yeah, no, I didn't, yeah, I just think
And we just took out criminal, 'cause like we said, a lot of what's happening here are these minor, are more minor violations, and we just thought it sounded better.
I like it. And so, so are we gonna keep that?
Do you feel more, is that
Yeah, I mean, if, if, hearing that, and, and it seems like Patty's fine with it, Chief's fine with it, so that's, I, and, and I honestly wasn't, wasn't realizing that you were expecting that task force to handle all of it. I just, I just know that when we, when we tackled the task force last year, the ACE task force last year, we decided very distinctly to separate the two discussions, and that's why I, I was still thinking along those lines.
Yeah.
So back to the last column, resources, how do we capture TCN and some of the other
We should just add it.
Okay, but I guess, yeah, but I was also thinking about, you know, some of the folks that you've brought together, Mary Ann and Catherine, and it's, I don't know if there's more inclusive, but
Well, NAMI should, NAMI could be in there as a resource.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I mean, I think it's one of those things that, you know, just like you say, can be changed and added. Can we make it any shorter?
I tried.
Can we take all your words to make it shorter?
You're not to the long one yet.
I know, I know, that's what I'm thinking about, you know, I have this thing about two pages. Yeah, well, that's my goal.
I did better than Mary Ann did.
All council paperwork should be on two pages.
Well, maybe we could have, well, maybe there could be like a cover page with the main goal thing, and then, you know, additional material to dig into it.
Although, okay, village justice. Okay. Okay, do we want to move on to the next one?
Okay. Well, the original chart that Judy sent out didn't quite capture what I had sent her. And so she redid it, thank you Judy, and put it on the, our table. So hopefully, you're looking at the, what she had on the table. So Judith and I talked about the objective, the goal of developing mixed-income housing on the glass farm. And we didn't come to total agreement about how to frame this as a goal. So I put in actually two goals. One, which is the overarching goal. And so in the new chart, that's what you see first in italics. So the overarching goal would be to develop mixed-income housing on the glass farm that meets village goals and values. And also, in terms of the values, I felt that all of the values are actually included in this goal. But this is a very long-term goal, I think. I put in 2016 to 2020, five years, but frankly, I would suspect it would be more like 10 years. So then in italics are listed the results that we would expect from that overarching goal, which would be a mix of rental and home ownership and affordable units that meet the following criteria and needs. So those needs are the constituency groups that have particular need for housing, getting data on the balance of the kind of housing that we need, and then incorporating environmental and sustainability and social just, well, social justice would be included, I didn't actually write that in. But incorporating the various sustainability principles that we have in terms of the housing development. That, that would be that long-term, five to 10-year goal. So, but for 2016, what it, a goal, a manageable would be to develop a planning process for mixed-income housing on the glass farm. And basically, what that means is to get the data that we need to get in order to be able to move forward. For example, there are some practical considerations, like the infrastructure that exists around the glass farm, what infrastructure would need to be changed, the access roads, potential roads that lead into the glass farm, the characteristics of the land itself, where you could put housing, where maybe you wouldn't want to. So those are, that, that, some of that information we have. And then there is looking at a process that would be transparent and would involve the community. And then there is also looking at the kind of data that we would want, housing market studies and things like that. So that is why this, this is a very, this has a lot of things included in it.
I mean, it's really about hiring a consultant. I mean, everything, almost everything you have in this.
You think so.
Oh, absolutely. Who's going to assess the topography?
I mean, I also think...
Well, we know, there's, we have data about the topography. I mean, I'm not saying we're going to go around and do soil borings, but we have data in terms of soil type, elevation, so.
But I think what Karen's saying is that that would need to be assessed to see that it would support the housing development.
Yes.
So that's where the, yes, we have basic data, but that's where the consultant would come in.
Well, it occurs to me, I think all this detailed work is great, but maybe it doesn't have to all be listed out. And I wonder if we can just pull, develop a planning process, put it into actions required. It'll be two pages, but we don't want to, but we don't want to lose all this information, right? You know, so that can, that can live somewhere else. But maybe it doesn't have to be on the main goal document. But I think it's great.
Right, so we can take out overarching goal and just have that, develop mixed-income housing in the glass farm that meets village goals and values, have that be...
Well, that was what Judith and I were struggling with.
But have that be the goal.
Right.
And then develop planning processes, the action.
That's at least the first one. I mean, I don't know.
So what are you suggesting is the goal?
The overarching one.
Okay, develop mixed-income housing on the glass farm.
Have that be the goal.
Right.
Develop the planning process, and we don't need to repeat.
It's our action required. And then maybe that's all we need to list for now, because as you said, this is a long-term process.
That's the activity. Well, and I think, and I think that, I think that some of the research, I think that, that there's actually some research in the, in the, in the second column, the anticipated results. Research a balance of home, of home types or housing types needed, or something like that. I mean, we've talked about a housing survey forever, so.
A decade.
Research housing needs or, and I mean, that's, and that is not at all to, to suggest that the one, that what's been identified, I think that housing for, I think, I think the first one is fine. Housing for identified constituency groups such as, I don't know if I'd say constituency, I'd probably say underserved, maybe underserved or groups. Or, I mean, if we wanted to leave constituency, constituency, and that's fine, but.
I mean, it won't be all underserved necessarily.
Depends on how we define underserved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't, I mean, it...
Is that my phone? Great. I think it is.
It is.
Well, what, I was going, I'm getting together with Patty tomorrow, and one of the topics that I wanted to talk about was this.
Okay. Because I have a couple of ideas just looking at it.
So I'm thinking maybe you and I could come up with some streamlining.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have a couple of ideas, so.
So do we want to just hold this then, I mean, just for approval for the next meeting? See how we can't? We're getting closer.
But, I mean, but, you know, we've got it.
No, I think it's good, I think it's good, yeah, I think.
And it's not going to stop us from moving ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you all.
Okay, good job, everybody.
Okay. So I, we didn't even get a motion or anything on that, so we don't even have to... So next on the agenda is the retreat discussion, preliminary agenda discussion location. Judy, would you review what we have set up so far?
Yeah, so far, we're set up to meet at Antioch University Midwest on, I think it's March 24.
It is.
From nine to four, three, four o'clock, whatever is needed in that regard. So that's, that's set to go. So the next step really is setting the agenda.
Okay.
And I won't order any pizza with pesto on it. Got it?
Uh, nine to four.
It's just, just your details, that's all I need. Then move it on forward.
So, agenda items, folks, anybody been thinking about that?
Commissions.
Okay.
Eight to four, nine to four. Did you just say?
Commissions.
As a general topic.
Um, I, I think to be more specific, how we, how council and commissions work together.
I think, I would also suggest under commissions, we put something about sunshine law training of some kind.
Well, and everyone is supposed to, you know, with their roles and responsibilities.
Put him on speaker.
I know. Ask him if he wants to join the meeting. I guess I could turn my, actually mute my phone.
Is there something we should do there around the goals? Because we've got some, in terms of... These are, these are some big goals.
Well, should we, why, should we do a timeline, goals timeline, goals? That way we can talk about...
Yeah, sort of, yeah.
It just seems that we've got a lot of kind of big goals, and they're great, and just sort of, how are we going to manage it all?
I think, actually recall that we may have done that, not at the last retreat, but I think the one before that.
Can, I'm sorry, to go back a little bit to the commissions, can maybe some topic like commission best practices encompasses a lot of things, but it seems as if there is a lot that comes up around commissions, and if it's just a best practices approach that might cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think it would be helpful, since we did all this work last year, you know, with updating the ordinances, the roles and responsibilities statement, it'd probably be good to digest that and, and see where we're at.
I have to say, tonight, I was very impressed with all the work.
Oh, amazing, yeah.
Yeah, the commissions are doing, it's amazing.
Amy, anything in particular that our legal counsel is interested in us talking about?
I haven't spoken to Chris, I don't know if he has any ideas. I think a sunshine law training, just a general one for all boards and commissions, is a great idea.
Okay. Well, why don't we flesh it out? I mean, the goals timeline and maybe just, just fleshing out a little bit. I mean, that could, that could really take at least half the time, easily, so.
Well, and I will say, you know, I mentioned earlier about that, you know, the schools and their strategy plan, and, you know, it'd be interesting to have an exercise where we did kind of specifically articulate some of those things in our minds, so.
Some of what things?
Just with these goals, you know what, really looking at what those strategies, how they're going to map out. I mean, it's a timeline, but it's also, you know, Judith, you mentioned bandwidth and some of these other things, and prioritizing.
Right.
Then you do have two more meetings still before the retreats, so.
And it, obviously, it's a public meeting, it will be advertised, so. Okay. So are we done?
Did I see it's going to be at Antioch University?
Which room, Judy, do you know?
Well, I can't remember the room number, but it's halfway down on the first floor. It has a sink, and it's sort of big. And you can move stuff around, so you can configure it however you like.
Yeah, and we might want to think about, think about interfacing, if there's any kind of electronic interface. I know they have whiteboards, you might want to think about making sure we have the correct kind of markers, and we don't destroy their whiteboards. And I don't know if we want any of the sheets.
Flip charts.
Flip charts, we might want to just take something along. But everybody now just takes pictures of the whiteboards.
I prefer sheets. I'm just saying.
Uh, next, next item of discussion is a levy update. Melissa put a reminder in our packet to remind citizens and council and everyone that March 15th is our primary. It is probably going to be, not only for the fact that our levy is on the ballot, I think that there may be other pressing things on the ballot that are going to make people interested in going to the polls this time. It's going to be probably the most exciting primary we'll, we'll have in a long time, so. So just March 15th, we did, and I will say that, that because of the timing of the March 15th levy, or as opposed to thinking it was going to be in May, we were planning on a primary in May, just didn't get a committee together. And so given the fact that we're on kind of our third try on this one, and the last time, the community was very supportive of the levy, and we feel like we've been good stewards of the money, we feel like we've been explaining the financials and the budget pretty well every year. We decided that we wouldn't go for a committee to do fundraising, to go out and do fundraising, to create campaign materials. So we did create a, basically an informational piece that will go in the water and electric bills for the, that will go out the beginning of March. So that is the piece that we have in here. It's actually a rack card size on card stock, I believe. So that's what's going to be in the bills. I know that Melissa has prepared some additional information. Is that, is that to be discussed the next meeting?
Yeah, I think that what I would like is if, if there is any additional information that council or the community would like to see informational or educational-wise regarding our expenditures, or, you know, where the money goes, anything like that, any, any additional materials, I'd be willing to put some stuff together to put into the next council packet. So I know that the informational piece that's going in the utility bills talks about the millage and the general fund revenues and kind of what levy funds help pay for. But if there's any more information in terms of expenses on maybe a more in-depth level that I could provide, I'm more than willing to do that. I'd found a document that was shared with council earlier in 2015 regarding budget savings. It looked at the 2014 operating budget, compared it to the 2015 operating budget, and it showed all of the savings that were made operationally across all the budgets, including the general fund, which is where the levy impacts the most. So I have a couple of things that I could provide in the next packet, so just depending on what council would like to see, just let me know.
I would encourage us to talk to our, obviously, our, the people we know. Obviously, talk about the levy if we have, if we, our parts of organizations. I know that, as Brian talked to the school board, I think he's going to talk to the McKee group also. So any of us, I think that we can take that on to, and I'm sure Melissa can get copies of the, of this piece to take along if you'd like, and any other information you might want to take along. But writing letters to the editor is encouraged.
I was going to say, maybe we could each, a member of the council, you know, some of our friends who are, you know, would be willing to write a lot, you know, maybe we should each be trying to make that happen and with our email lists. If, do we have a simple electronic version of this that we've each, that we've gotten?
The one that was in the packet, I think that that one was in the packet, the side-by-side, maybe?
Yeah, there's one in the packet.
I was thinking, it's because, because I'm not so literate, maybe, so, maybe if we could get, if I could get this anyway, just an electronic copy that could be attached, you know, easily attached to a, an email. Communication, something like that.
Melissa, could you talk about, a question that came up was sort of the renewal, clarification on renewal with 8.4 mils versus actual dollars?
Yeah, I had, I had actually sent, I'd called over to the county auditor's office this morning, and they sent me over to the treasurer's office that said, "You need to talk to the auditor's office." So I did send an email to David Graham, and he provided a pretty lengthy explanation that I left on the printer. But it, I did glance at it, I didn't get a chance to read the whole thing because it was late in the day that I got it. But I can forward that on to everyone, or provide that in the next council packet. But it basically explained that the 8.4 mils is still the same rate, and it explained in depth, it was a fairly lengthy email, as to how the millage is calculated and such. So I did get a formal explanation from the county auditor that I can provide. But 8.4 mils is still where it has remained.
Okay. But if property values change, the millage changes, is that correct?
Our millage has, from, I didn't, like I said, I didn't get to read the entire thing because it came really late and I was in the middle of something else, so it kind of threw me for a loop. But it said that it's, it's maintained at 8.4 mils, and I think, and I seen in there towards the end that he did talk about how property values played into that. So I'll, I'll forward that to everybody, but I apologize, I left it on the printer.
But the upshot is, it's the same amount of dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, whatever the millage is.
The relationship between the different values, or if there's new... The relationship between the different values, or if there's new houses, can change a little bit, but.
Right, and if council remembers, one thing that struck us odd last year when the property valuations came out was that some of the properties in town, the value had gone down, but then some of the other properties had actually increased in value, and that had struck us odd at the time, because it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense, but maybe it just ended up that it worked out that way.
And if I may answer your question, Ryan, the money can change depending on the property values. If the millage stays the same, if the millage captures, captures a certain amount of money per dollar of the value of your home, of each property, so if the property values have gone up and the money captured from that property will be higher, the millage will remain the same, the rate.
See, I, I thought the money remained the same, but the millage changed, it's the opposite?
The millage does not change, it's a renewal levy, so the millage will stay the same, eight point four.
Okay, yeah, I, I do understand what you're saying, that's not the way it was explained to me before, okay.
She's an attorney.
But David Graham's explanation, well.
But this, but, but that still means it's a renewal?
It is a renewal.
It's a renewal, absolutely.
I mean, the up and downs are going to be small, is my, but it, it's, it's the total, is my understanding, so if a hundred new houses were built, for example, all of our, what we would pay would probably go down a little bit. Why are you shaking now?
No, I mean, whatever your home is worth, that is the percentage that you're paying, period, end of story.
But it has to all total?
No, if a hundred new homes are built, they are all paying that percentage of what their home is valued at, and we make more money as a village.
Yes, the amount of money will change, and I, I did not brush up on this particular topic before tonight, so bear with me as I walk through this explanation, but the significance in keeping it as a renewal levy to the property owners within the village is that there is a pickup on the part of the state, where a certain percentage of your tax is being paid by the state, and if you lose, when you let a levy expire, and if you were to replace it with a new levy, which is the difference between a renewal levy and a replacement levy, you lose the pickup, the state has brought that, they've changed the law, so by keeping things as a renewal, you will keep the pickup on the part of the state, I don't, I, I used to know what the numbers are, I don't have my head on what those numbers are, but there is a percentage that you take by the state's law, you keep it this way.
And the, the county auditor provides us with an estimate of what we'll receive, and it stayed relatively close, I mean, it, it has fluctuated a little bit over the last couple of years, but it stays relatively close, but their estimation, so what we're, what we're receiving our money for, we do the tax levy in July, or I mean, the, the, oh my gosh, the tax budget in July, and it takes into consideration the levy figures that we would receive the following year, because we are collecting in 2016 property taxes that were collected by the auditor in 2015, so if we had new property that was, or new housing that was developed, they would know that ahead of time so that we could anticipate receiving those funds the following year, so when they give us their estimates, they have a handle on what's going on in terms of our housing markets at the time, because we get it a year in arrears.
So you're basically, so you're saying that the reason it stayed at around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is that we just haven't had any new housing, we haven't had significant new housing?
And property values have stayed relatively stable.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You're still capturing that eighty-four cents per, right, eighty-four cents per hundred dollars.
Per hundred.
Of property value.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll have some, a little bit more information at the next meeting, and Melissa is going to share the, the information from David Graham with us independently of that. I would appreciate that, because I think, I, I would definitely like to see it. Next on the agenda is the Facebook page that we discussed and agreed to at the last meeting, I will turn it over to Brian.
Um, okay, so first of all, we have fifty likes on our village Facebook page that has not officially been published yet, and that is because, and I'll try not to get into the weeds, but I don't really understand how this got lost in the shuffle, but when our international fellows were here and did research and talked about municipalities turning off comments, I don't know where they got that information, because you cannot do that on a Facebook page, and that's why when the chief said he thought he did that, you cannot, you can do that on a personal page, you know, like Mary Ann's page, Karen's page, but you cannot do that on an organizational Facebook page. I'm also not sure why that wasn't vetted out when the community access panel looked at it, but I, I'm guessing that was the confusion, that, you know, a personal page, which some businesses do, they act as if, you know, they are an individual, but that is against Facebook policies. So I guess what we need to decide at this point is, are, so I have not done anything to that Facebook page once I found that out, because we cannot turn off comments, so I guess, you know, what we've got to decide is, are we going to move forward and allow comments and have a Facebook page, or are we not going to have a Facebook page?
Why don't we try it?
Definitely, we've gotten two comments, one was a resident that said, thank you for allowing comments, and the other was, actually, your brother, tagged the Village of Yellow Springs and just said, this is a cool place to live, and tagged our Facebook page, so.
I would suggest something, because Patty and I were, were on, if we were talking on the phone, we were trying, I was trying to help Patty find the page, there are about five pages called the Village of Yellow Springs that have been set up by other people.
And some of them actually say they're government pages, too.
I would like, can we change the name to Yellow Springs Government?
And you guys are sure those are pages, not groups?
I was going from page to page.
I searched.
Because I've looked at, I've looked at different things.
I searched Village of Yellow Springs and a bunch of other things popped up.
Yeah, I mean, right here.
And I don't, and that makes, that starts to make it ineffective, if, if you're, if people are going to a page.
What about the Village of Yellow Springs Municipality? Because I, because I thought.
Because it's more than government.
I thought this was ours, and this is not ours.
Can I just see that real quick?
And in fact, I couldn't find ours until Karen actually sent me the link.
Well, because ours is still supposed to be a secret.
Well, I found, but I found it myself, I found, so it's not a secret, because Les Groby has already put it on his Facebook page, so.
Well, I guess secret is probably, is a misnomer, since we talked about it in our meeting, but it wasn't official.
Because I was, I was looking at this going, well, why is this person posting this and this, and Karen's like, that's not our page, so.
So I, I just was, I, I would just like people to know that they're going on to our page and that it is a government page.
Maybe put the word village in there, it sounds less.
No, that's, there are two Village of Yellow Springs government organizations that pop up. The first one, I think, is unclaimed, but somebody, but people are posting on it, and that's, that's something that I don't think we can have, you know, I, I think we need to have a name that's.
Stands out.
That's different, and that, and that absolutely identifies that it's the government page, so I don't, Yellow Springs Government, that's the only.
Yeah, I think, I think we're allowed to change our name once.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll try, I mean, I, I just came off of a really frustrating situation with Facebook posts, you know, very, very outrageous Facebook posts that I got in the middle of, and, you know, first question that was asked to me by somebody, somebody said, and the village wants to have a Facebook page, why? So, you know, I, and the comments that, the comments that, that happened, that I was, I wasn't involved in them, but anyway, they were, they were comments that could not have been removed, there would have been no reason to have them removed, so I think I just, I just want to monitor it, and I want to monitor it very closely.
Except, we're not going to be posting about that particular issue, and one of the standards is if it's off topic.
So can they, can people post, can people, can, can people originate a post?
No, that we can turn off.
Okay, now that, that will help.
Yeah.
That will help, okay. Okay.
Did we just say?
Yeah, I mean, I think you said, I, I, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gone this, this far, I mean, I'd say let's go ahead and.
Because I know Johnny was very adamant.
I think, I think the thing is that staff has just become a little sensitive to the derogatory comments. I hope that doesn't happen here, I mean, you know, we'll just have to play it by ear and see, you know, we intend to use it for notices and, and things like that, and, and that's the purpose of the page, so we'll see how it goes.
Now, just because I frankly don't care one way, I mean, just because I don't see myself using it, but, so I guess I'd like to understand why, how is this more beneficial than just putting stuff on our notice board or whatever on our website?
One issue that I, that I think is different is all the commissions have asked, especially HRC, for a way to promote their activities.
Yeah.
And we have not let them have a Facebook page, because we didn't have standards.
Can they do it on our website?
Websites just aren't interactive enough, I mean, I literally get, I mean, you're on Facebook, Marion, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
But, I mean, so, so I get notices, I mean, you know, I could sit here and I could run through a list of fifty different things, fifty different things that are posted on my Facebook page, and I could see, I, I don't go to people's websites. You know, you have to go to a website, most people that are into social media and that are going to benefit from this are on social media on a regular basis, and are seeing the posts, they're seeing the feeds, so it's, it's just a much more, it's a much quicker, it's a much more immediate, and it's going to get to a lot more people than our website, I think we should do both, but it's, it's more immediate. I think, you know, we really, if we want to have something that's really about emergencies, we should probably consider Twitter, I think that, do you have a Twitter account? Oh, I thought, somebody had started one, I thought, maybe John.
Tony.
Tony, oh, Tony started one, okay, because that gets to people right away, I don't think a lot of people in Yellow Springs use Twitter, so I'm not going to, I don't think that's a big deal, but I, I think that Facebook's totally different than a website, I will say that. Try it.
Okay, yep, we can always.
Always.
Re-buys, we can always change. I, I, I mean, I, I feel confident that it's going to be beneficial, but if I'm proven wrong, I think we should revisit it.
Okay, so next item on the agenda, we received a letter from Reggie Stratton from Antioch College notifying us that in June, that they're going to drain the Wellness Center pool to clean and repaint the interior, and, which is, you know, the pool is used, an incredible, well, the whole Wellness Center is, is being used an incredible amount, so what they're asking is that we donate the water to refill the pool after the repairs are complete, this is actually something we did before the Wellness Center opened, we actually donated the water to fill the pool the first time. There's a little glitch in that one, I wanted to make sure it wasn't going to happen again, and it, we've been assured that it's only going to be filled one time, and it's going to be with village water, so I personally would, I would support it. Patty, do, do you have any comments from staff?
I don't remember exactly how much it was, I believe it was in the range of six hundred dollars last year. I did ask Reggie about the fact that they, the last time when we filled it, and then they emptied it again, and then they filled it with water from Springfield, and what he explained to me was that they had emptied it because there had been a contractor's mistake, and I think it had something to do with the lights, and then he said that because the contractor had agreed to pay for the water to refill it, that they filled it with Springfield because the water is softened there and requires less chemical treatment than if they were to purchase our water, and so that's why they went ahead and filled it with Springfield water last time. Do you, do you have, anybody have anything else they want to add?
So how much is that water worth, do we?
Oh, you just said six hundred dollars.
Oh, six hundred dollars.
I think, yeah, I think that was what we, I think that was the total that we had come up with based on the gallons last time.
Yeah, I, I had a comment, actually, it was Chrissy Cruz from HRC, which I would just like to, I mean, I'd like to put out the sort of request that she suggested, first of all, the Wellness Center is great, yeah, and it's difficult for lower income people to afford to be able to go to the Wellness Center. Chrissy, I guess, had tried to see whether it would be possible for kids who go to the Bryan Center to be able to go like once a week or something to the Antioch, to the pool for free, and she was suggesting, I think, that we see if we could, if we could arrange something like that, apparently, they haven't, they hadn't responded to that, but I thought that sounded like an interesting request.
It seems that that should go through, if, if it's anything related to the Bryan Youth Center, it should be coming through staff, though, not from Chrissy to the Wellness Center.
I think she was doing it as part of HRC, wasn't she, partly, but just to say, they do have a fund there for low-income people that they can apply, but I also think this is a, this is, you know, although it's well-used, there are times when there's not that many people there, and it probably would be, they probably would be very happy to, you know, maybe make it available to some of the youth who don't have such an easy opportunity to go, but, but just to say, they do have, people can apply for reduced cost.
And I think there has, I think there has been some discussion of certain types of programs like that, and, and I don't think they're quite to the point where they're ready to move forward with those kind of things, other than the, the low-income one that they have, I don't think that they're quite ready to.
Well, they, I mean, they have, the Children's Center goes there, and the Antioch School goes there.
But I assume that they, that.
I mean, I'm sure they've made a range.
People are monitoring that, that the Children's Center and the, the Antioch College, the Wellness Center isn't monitoring.
No.
We don't have anybody to monitor.
Right, that's true.
So that's why we're suggesting staff be involved.
Um, I, I think there are a few questions that, I mean, I mean, I realize it's a small amount of money, I love the Wellness Center, I support everything that Antioch College is doing, but I feel like there are a couple of questions we need to ask, one of those being, why, why don't, why doesn't the Wellness Center have funding to cover costs for the pool? I, I guess I would just want to understand that a little bit better, maybe, and I really like this idea of some kind of quid pro quo, or, for that matter, some kind of matching, I mean, when we did this the first time, I mean, honestly, we did say it was a one-time, we wanted to support the Wellness Center, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't continue, but, yeah, I, there were several concerns besides Chrissy that were raised to me as well, so I'm reluctant to make a decision, especially since this isn't until June, until maybe we have a little bit more information, that's my opinion.
Do you want?
I, I am curious as to, a year in does seem pretty, pretty early for repairs and repainting, I mean, I don't.
I don't think that they're necessarily.
It's like cleaning and repainting.
Cleaning and repainting.
And repainting, so. Do you want me to see if Reggie is available to come?
Sure.
And speak to council, and maybe he can answer, I can give him, you know, these questions and concerns.
And, and maybe Monica needs to come, or, or can talk to Reggie.
About programming that would.
Because I, yeah, it'd be very cool if we could figure out, I mean, maybe there are vol, parent volunteers that would take the kids up there a couple of times a month or something, I don't know, but it'd be nice to see that kind of benefit. I mean, that's what we do, I guess a comparison would be with the John Bryan, Bryan Community Pottery, you know, that one dollar a year is in exchange for community programming, and so I, I appreciate those kinds of things, I think there are things we can do.
But they charge for that community programming?
They do some.
John Bryan?
They do something free every month.
Okay.
Or at a reduced rate.
They're supposed to do something free every month, and they did do it last month.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I saw an agreement, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we actually just renewed that agreement.
Well, and I guess, you know, it, it, I, I would suggest that it's probably, they would have the six hundred dollars, I'm sure they're not, they're looking at a community share, I'm sure that it's not because they don't have the six hundred. I'm sure that it's not because they don't have the $600 to fill the pool.
Right.
It's a community share. So, God, my phone, what is with my phone tonight? So, but I would like to know, I mean, is this going to be an annual thing? That would be, that would be something to know.
The question that came to my mind, and I'm pretty, I'm supportive of the idea of, you know, doing this for Antioch, but, and I like the idea of a quid pro quo also, but is that when, I mean, they're a nonprofit, but when we have different organizations come to us for different kinds of, you know, you know, could you help us here? Could you help us there? Could you give us a reduction here? You know, what are the guidelines we're using? And, you know, how are we thinking about it? And that's, that's a thought that came up for me.
Right, and we do, and we do have that process, actually. That's when, you know, the Arts Council submitted their request for $150. Yeah, and it's, and it's about matching it to Village Goals, and there's a short form to fill out.
So maybe we just ask them to...
I, I would almost liken this more to an economic development incentive, to be quite honest. That's what it is. It's a business, it's, it's an organization, they're, this is helping their bottom line. It's not really, so, you know, and that's actually part of what...
But I wonder though...
...was being discussed about, you know, some of the things with economic development, you know, the water line for Home Inc., for, for C Street, you know, assessing, assessing some incentives and figuring out what those incentives are, because we were basically awarding an incentive. And so I think that, that having those kinds of things, we're probably not, we're not going to have any of it in line directly for this decision, but I think just having Reggie here to ask some questions.
Going back to the idea of having something for the Bryan Center kids, what I think I'm hearing is, one, if that were to happen, we, we don't have the capacity right now to supervise kids in that regard. So that's something that would have to be done. But the other thing was that Antioch would need to, what?
Well, they don't, I mean, they, they don't have the capacity either.
They don't have the capacity to manage the kids, but they could possibly...
Maybe that's the quid pro quo. Maybe that's part of the quid pro quo that they do, because they do...
They've got lifeguards always on.
Well, they have lifeguards, and they also do programming for, for kids. It's called play something, play well, I think that they have. So people, parents can come, either drop off their kids when they're working out or separately. So, you know, they do have situations where they have teachers or, or counselors that can be there with the kids. So maybe that would be part of it, that, you know, one day a week, one hour a week or something, they would give us an hour of their staff time, their lifeguard time.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting it on the schedule, you know, inter, facing with their schedule.
And I hate to, hate to complicate, but getting the kids there, too. How are we going to get the kids there?
Well, you know, I think if you just did something as simple as, there's Dollar Day at Antioch Pool, which runs from two to three o'clock on Saturdays, end of story, easy. And then anyone can get there with their dollar.
Except that some of the kids maybe don't have a way to get there, and maybe there's a...
Most of the kids that come here will either walk or ride their bikes anyway.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, that's, yeah.
It could be for the whole community. It would be a wild see.
They're going to love this.
Well, I think something cool can come out of this.
Yeah.
Okay, next is the manager's report.
Okay, the installation of the radio read electric meters is continuing. Streetscape bids are out for the final two phases of Streetscape. They, we will be accepting bids until February 29th. It will be done in phases, as was discussed with the business owners last year. And by phases, I mean sections, so it'll be minimally disruptive to each business in turn. I want to, before we get on to the, to the water plant process, I do have two quick announcements that are not in my report. One is that Chief did receive a resignation letter from Officer Stephanie Spurlock, who has, unfortunately for us, accepted a position with Wright State University's campus police. She was, she was very torn about this. I actually spoke to her about this during the last coffee with a cop. And she, she really loves Yellow Springs, but she does have children who are rapidly approaching college age, and that is one of the benefits that she gets for being an officer with Wright State, so she couldn't pass it up. The second thing is that currently, we have our telephone service with AT&amp;T, and Cincinnati Bell has actually offered us free upgrades of all of our telephones and some additional services, and for the same cost, essentially, that we are paying AT&amp;T on a monthly basis.
Is this cell or hard line?
No, it's the hard lines for the offices, all of the offices, new, it's all new equipment. And it's essentially, it's a lease package, so they maintain the equipment and the lines. And so we will be switching over eventually from AT&amp;T to Cincinnati Bell. There's, it should be seamless as far as the public is concerned, but it will be great for staff, because we'll have all, right now, our phones are pretty antiquated in the offices. And so we will have some new ability to transfer to remote locations, like, instead of, if you call Ruth Ann and you need to talk to Brad or Jason, and they're at a remote location, she can, she'll be able to actually transfer you out, as opposed to saying, well, you have to call this other number.
Is, is, is there, is it, are we going to make sure that, that citizens don't get caught in a circle of voicemails?
Yes, it will be the, it'll be the same type of automated assistant that we have right now, but it'll work just like our system now, as far as from the outside. For us internally, it'll be a little bit simpler for us. But the last thing is, a question was brought up about the corrosive effect of the, of the water, the, the new water plant and the pellet softening process. And you see that answer in the, in my report. The pH will be maintained at a slightly alkaline level, and it won't become acidic during this process. And if it should become acidic, we will be able to add an anticorrosive, but we won't be adding a chemical that we don't need. So we'll just monitor that and make sure that the water does not become corrosive in the lines. But with this process, it should not do that.
Patty, I think in that last sentence, it, it should say, if there's a decrease in the pH.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You are absolutely correct, Marian. It should say decrease. You are correct. And you know, three people read that, and nobody caught that. So, okay, so if we go on to the water plant process, you do have a couple of different handouts in your, in your packet. The first one I gave to you back in December that kind of brought you up to, up to the level that we were at there. One question that Brian had asked me is that the original recap that I gave you noted the initial price at eight million. The eight million was only for the construction of the plant itself and did not include engineering, which is why the second one that you have says 10 million. That was because Shook had filled out their primary sheet a little bit differently, and when we started actually talking to them, we, we realized that they had done that and hadn't included the, the engineering in that price.
Well, it wasn't just engineering, it was basically all of the general conditions, which is all of their, all of their supervision, all of their overhead, all of their profit, all of everything, everything besides actually building the plant.
Building the plant.
That added up to 2 million.
And so we started negotiations with Shook Construction and Jones and Henry Engineering. So we were starting at 10 million, and as you can see from my report, we actually got them down to 7,209,233 dollars. That's about as much as we're going to be able to cut from that price. Once we get into the full design of it, could it conceivably go down a little bit? I would say yes, but if, you shouldn't be looking for any huge gains, you know, any more huge savings in that. This is not, here's what council needs to understand. This is not the guaranteed maximum price. We will not have that until June, and that's how this process works. That's how the design-build process works. But with that said, the, the committee did meet, and based on the funding that we have, which is a $1.3 million, zero percent interest, 30-year loan from OPWC, and we also have a grant of $162,800 from OPWC that will pay part of the interest on the OWDA loan on the first couple of payments. The rest of that would be borrowed from OWDA with a low interest, slightly below market rate loan, and I think right now that stands at 2.89.
I think it was 3.2 was the full, full value, full rate.
So what I'm, what the committee is recommending to council is that we proceed in signing a contract with Shook Construction and their sub, Jones and Henry Engineering to move forward with the plant. And what I'm recommending to council is that we borrow an additional $6.2 million from OWDA to finance the project. That will give us slightly more than what we need, but it will ensure that we don't have to go back to them again for additional funding. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, because she did this lovely financial analysis... For everybody to understand where the fund is going to stand at the end.
I know, I can't read it.
So...
I apologize for the tiny print. This is basically, this is gleaned from the R-CAP report, only I tailored it to be a little more suited towards our needs and the specifics of this particular financing situation in terms of the water plant. The budget that is before you includes the $7.5 million total cost of a water treatment plant. It also includes all of the pieces that Patty just explained, a 1.3 million no-interest 30-year loan, the $162,000 interest grant from OPWC, and then the $6.2 million loan that would round out the project to be received from OWDA. So what we basically have in front of us, the most important piece to kind of draw your attention to is the green block. That shows our water fund balances. The good, I, I was particularly nervous about this, because we thought that, I was bracing for a payment in 2017, because as you all know, we started rate increases this year, so we won't realize full potential of those rate increases for a little while, because we're kind of playing catch-up. So after Patty and I had talked with the folks at OWDA, the first payment would be due a year after substantial completion, so we figured that there would be a payment in 2018, and the interest grant from OPWC would be taken from that first payment as well. So that actually helped us out. So the first payment would be approximately $89,000 in 2018. So that allows our, our reserves to kind of build because of those rate increases up until that point, because that would be within the third year of the 30% increase. So if you take a look at the green and you look at the bold at the bottom, which I know is kind of hard to see, by the time the first payment would hit, our reserves would be at approximately 1.2 million, that's projected. So it made me much more comfortable there. I had originally informed the committee that I would be kind of reserved to go over 7 million on a water treatment plant, but after kind of running these numbers and the year of the first payment falling in 2018 definitely provided a cushion. I also sat down with Johnny, and we looked at some of the things that might need to be done. In 2018, we've got Fairfield Road water line replacement project that would need to be done. We've also got the painting of the water towers in there, and then a remote read water meters, which, if we put in a brand-new water plant, we need to make sure that the water's being metered correctly with new meters. So those are some of the projects that we included, as well as transferring out approximately $50,000 every year to the capital improvement escrow fund to brace for any additional projects that the water fund might need to take on. But having a new water treatment plant, two new, fairly new plants at that point, we anticipate that any kind of capital improvements would be minimal. So with that being said, the, the long and the short of that is that I'm comfortable with moving forward from the financial standpoint, given that the kind of plan is perfectly aligned with this one in terms of the year that the payment would be hitting and the rate increases that have already been passed, and just kind of the, the scenario that, as it's played out, makes me much more comfortable. So it, it has my stamp of approval at this point.
Questions?
Had we guessed at what this cost was going to be before? I'm not remembering what the...
We got, we got an estimate from John Eastman. The first estimate was, I mean, it was three or four years old. It's, it's maybe older than that. Do we know when the first estimate was? And it was basically, John got an estimate from Artesian Pioneer to put in a package plant, and he was just repeating it. He, so, you know, the estimate, the estimate we got from John that we've been looking at and working with was wrong.
And what was it, like?
Like, three and a half million. Well, it would be, I think it was like closer to four or four and a half million for a, for a softening plant. And unfortunately, I, you know, I'm not happy with, with HNTB about this, but for whatever reason, they came back and basically confirmed that price. They came, they came in at like 5.3 million for their initial budget that they put out to, to the contractors in the RFQ. And Sam was almost immediately getting phone calls. These contractors all looked at that plant and said, there's no way this is a $5 million plant. So Patty was getting phone calls. She got a phone call from Springfield actually saying, oh, you guys are probably going to want to be going back to tying into our water, because the contractors had actually been talking to somebody up there about how, about the price of this plant. So it's, you know, the estimates, we, we just got bad, you know, we've been, we've been just looking at, considering way too low of an estimate of a plant for what we wanted. And, and, you know, to get a plant that, the softening was a real issue, you know, coming up with this, with a softening system that is a unique system. And how does Artesian Pioneer work? I mean, they basically just come in and set in...
Essentially, what Artesian does is they do, they're literally package plants. You buy, you want to soften your water, and it has iron in it. Okay, well, here's a plant that if you buy this plant is going to soften your water and take the iron out. Okay, here it is, here's your square footprint. You get the same plant that everybody else gets. It's a package plant. It's a standard plant that does exactly what you want. And these, they're designed, or you can pick elements, where you, you have iron and you want to remove your iron, but you don't want to soften. Okay, here's a plant that does nothing but take iron out. Here's a plant that does nothing but take manganese out. It's, they're called package plants because that's exactly what they are. They're, they're packages that you buy and they build them. So it's like buying a prefab home kind of deal.
And what would be the downsides of doing that?
The downside of doing that is that you're not going to find one that does the pellet softening that we want and removes the iron and manganese. So, I mean, they're just very basic plants that, that do very, very basic things. And then when you start adding the, the additional specialty items, that's where your cost gets driven up.
And his, his was ion softening? Which, you know, I, I wouldn't even, at this point, I wouldn't even take to the community.
Well, it's, ion softening, if I remember, is, is slightly more to implement, but it's also more expensive to maintain, so...
And so what's interesting to me, Melissa, is that, you know, how these numbers came out. So, I mean, is, is that because the rate study really did do a good job of capturing these costs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. What, what I had done for the initial discussion with the committee was, it was requested that I stripped down some of the, what was perceived as extra type of... as extra type of preventative and predictive maintenance, because not everybody kind of seen eye to eye on those costs. So I had presented a stripped-down version in the initial look at what we might be able to afford. And then I cautioned that with, I really need to sit down with Johnny to figure out what kind of distribution projects he might have, because even though the plants will be new and newer, the distribution lines will still need work. And I wanted to talk to Johnny about a kind of plan that he was comfortable with. So we sat down and we revisited this, and really the key was allowing those reserves to be able to, to recover from kind of the hit that they had taken over the last couple of years before the first payment has hit. So if, if the first payment would have been in 2016, I was completely against it. But as it worked out, it's going to be a year after substantial completion, so that, that's likely going to be 2018. So that made me much more comfortable, because we couldn't have afforded it, we couldn't have afforded it in 2016. Our reserves just didn't have enough time to be able to be built up, because we wouldn't have captured most of those revenues yet, so.
Yeah, based on the, based on the projected construction schedule, the substantial completion of this plant should be somewhere around August of 2017. So the first payment, the payments are due January 1 and July 1, although Melissa tells me that they took it out in December and kind of threw her for a loop on the, on the loop completion. But they, it would be, you know, the fact that it's not going to be due until sometime in late 2018 is what made this work, to be honest, because it gives us that time for those increases to be implemented and those reserves to be built up.
So being a little more realistic in terms of what our expenses are going to be, still investing in those capital improvement plans to kind of compensate for taking some of those extra things out, and then, you know, the, the rate increases, a combination of all those things. I mean, it, it really was kind of the, a perfect scenario in terms of how all this played out, even though it was a little bit more than what, you know, I was expecting, so.
So the question is, does council want me to bring a resolution and a contract, as well as a resolution for the OWDA loan, to the next meeting? Why would we wait? If we wait, it will throw us behind schedule, so. Should I go forward? Okay.
Yep.
I will have them at the next meeting. And I, that is it for me.
Melissa, you've had a lot tonight. Do you have anything else additional to add on your report? Judy?
Oh, I have nothing major. Nothing major. Just getting things done, and the stinkbugs are finally starting to leave my premises.
That was good.
Occasional attacks.
And I did want to ask why Kathy's background check. Is that just, that they normally take that long, or?
It depends on the Sheriff's Department and how quick they get to them.
I am a little surprised it's taking so long, I have to say.
It's really not ours. It's a, it's an outside agency, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's go quickly through board and commission reports. Judy, Judith, you didn't go, did you go to the planning commission meeting? Because I know.
I did. They've been reviewing swimming pools and hot tubs.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. It was exciting.
And there's, there was a piece that didn't get noticed and so couldn't get covered in that meeting. So following the next planning commission meeting, there should be a wave of legislation.
I actually just had a Green County Regional Planning meeting tonight, or this afternoon. It's the executive committee. They've asked me to be on the executive committee, so we kind of make initial decisions. And interestingly enough, the, the project they're hearing was down in Spring Valley, and it's related to a mine, or a gravel pit actually being dug under part of their, over, over part of their well field. I mean, it was pretty interesting. We, it was absolutely unanimous. Now, we don't make decisions, it's just a recommending body, absolutely unanimous that they not be allowed to do that. Now, it goes to the full board, then it goes to their planning commission, then it goes to their trustees. So hopefully, everybody will, but it was pretty interesting to be sitting there, listening to that.
So apropos to that, one thing, when we met with Tecumseh Land Trust, we were actually talking about the glass farm thing, but Krista pointed out that we do not have an easement over our well fields. We own that land, but we don't have a conservation easement. So that's something that'd be good for us to do.
Brian?
Okay, let me start with the Public Art Commission, because that's pretty quick. Lots of progress being made on policies to get the John Bryan Community Gallery back in action, which I think is really good. And you'll notice the Arts and Culture Commission did sort of confirm what they thought would be good goals for 2016. Any feedback from council would be appreciated. Also, I think the, the piece about funding for public art is very interesting, and they want to look at what kinds of grants and things the village might qualify for, and actually looking for maybe another person on the commission that has that background. And then I'll mention one more time, still taking nominations for the Village Inspiration and Design Award until March 1st. The Community Access Panel, I think it's very interesting to look at Susan's report. One thing that I was really frustrated by is the station went down for over a week because of time order. And I guess there's nothing we can do about that, but, you know, we invested in a new server, which we can send back. But it brought to light another issue, which is being discussed by the panel now, is should we just shift to an online station? And so that's being discussed. I just wanted to give council a heads up. Susan's on board with this. I think there's a lot of interesting potential, and even our folks that use it as a lifeline could still, I think, get on a computer, but, you know, we'll, we'll see where that comes. But, you know, very frustrating that that happened. I also wanted to give Susan kudos for the tribute to Faith Patterson on the station. Thanks for doing that. That was great. And I will emphasize that Community Access Panel really needs members. We are close to the point where we may not be able to have a quorum moving forward. So I encourage people to think about the value of community access and the many things that we're working on. But that has been a commission that's been undersubscribed. Community Access Panel also has its 2016 goals. You will notice that the municipal broadband piece is not on that. I explained before, there's really not a role for the panel at this point, and I think it resolves some other things. And then Economic Sustainability Commission will be confirming their goals, but they'll be in line with council goals. I think we've sort of laid out what the commission should be working on, and everybody's on board with that. Great group. I mean, we now have a very diverse group in so many different ways. I'm excited. And, you know, the focuses right now are the revolving loan fund and the incentive policy.
Mary Ann, or Judith, excuse me.
The Energy Board is reviewing proposals for the solar farm, or whatever we call it there, over on the glass farm, and should be bringing something back to council the next meeting. And there's going to be a special meeting next week, which is an executive session meeting primarily to, again, to be looking over those proposals. The Library Commission, they're looking at a lot of just small issues of the building. They, I was impressed with the detail with which they are caring for our, for our building and overseeing things. And I know Patty had sent some information over, which I shared with them, which they were glad to know that. And so they're going to, they're thinking, you know, the library has gotten a lot of funding to help the physical plant in the last couple of years, anyway, and so that they'll be just focusing, and now it's little, small things, just to keep the upkeep of the building in good shape.
Okay.
Mary Ann?
Okay, the mediation program has not met since I've been the liaison, but we, mediation has a meeting scheduled for the 10th of March. And one of the things that we're going to talk about, and talk with the chief, I haven't talked to you about this, I don't think, but about the community police mediation concept. I think, I think maybe you might have gone to it. Did you go to a meeting, the mediation committee meeting?
No, but Chief and I talked about that when, when you and I talked about it previously, and Chief, then Chief and I talked about it.
I think, well, at any rate, Janet Mueller is going to come to the mediation program to talk about how that works. So the, I haven't done anything yet with the school board, but I, I will be making contact with them. The Environmental Commission just met tonight. We're starting to work out plans for the Clean Ohio Grant, including the Beaver Management Task Force, which Vicki is going to get in touch with Patty about. But that was a topic of discussion at the meeting, how that, the idea that there would be a group that include, included stakeholders like neighbors, as well as the village staff person, council person, EC person, to be ongoingly monitoring beaver activities. We talked about educational activities. One, we're going to start doing a series of educational activities, starting in June, mostly around water, because between the glass farm wetlands and the wellhead protection work, a lot of the work that HR, that EC is doing involves water. That's mostly what we talk about at HRC. I mean, at EC, okay. Oh, we have someone who'd like to become a member of the Environmental Commission. You've got a short letter. George Coder is his name. George had been living in Cleveland, recently moved here. He spent most of his career after, he had been a history professor at Ohio State, but he spent most of his career working for the US EPA in public relations. And he's very interested in sustainability and wants to help the Environmental Commission with educational outreach. So, but he does have some health concerns, so what he, so what we suggested, we being Jerry, Sims, and myself, who interviewed him, was that he come on as an alternate. And he felt good about that, because then he didn't feel quite the sort of pressure of being a regular member. So Jerry and I had a good interview with George, and were excited about having him come on the.
Do you want to make a motion?
Environmental Commission, so we would like to, I would like to move that council accept the nomination of George for the Environmental Commission as an alternate.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pretty invaluable resource. That's great.
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay, so HRC. One of the topics of the last meeting was planning for the HRC retreat, which is going to be on the 6th, Sunday, the 6th, in Room A and B from 1:30 to 4:30. And we started developing a list of things, topics that we wanted to have at the retreat. We also did talk about the concept of the hill springs help.org, and I'm really not sure where that's going to go, but hopefully it'll go somewhere. We also talked about the Community Drug Issues Meeting that we had, and the report that came out of that. And we're, three of us are going to get together to decide what next steps we as HRC would take in, in whether facilitating any more discussions or what happens. I'm not sure about that. But some good things did come out of that meeting, I think, so at least we would try to move some of those ideas forward. So I think that takes care of HRC.
I said the chamber has their, we have our annual meeting Thursday night. Let's see, what else? It's, obviously, this is our quiet time, except for getting, getting ready for the annual meeting, and then we're still, we're really busy, just starting, getting busy on street fair, so that things are moving forward there. And VRPC, I had the minutes from the last meeting in the packet, and it does appear that things are going to be moving forward with this kind of modified 35, Route 35 access plan that's going to cost, you know, a few million dollars compared to 100 million, so. Something absolutely needs to happen there, because it is dangerous and there are a lot of backups. So hopefully, this will be a resolution. Let's look ahead briefly at the future agenda items. This is what we have. The, I do have quite, the flat rate structure discussion we're going to have, you know, I know that I want to get, to kind of inform some businesses of what's going on, and I don't feel I have enough information to even talk to them.
We're going to work on some additional flat rate information.
It will with, with John Gorton, yeah.
So, but, so it's, I should probably just put out an invitation for business owners potentially to come to that meeting, to learn about it, or what?
Yes, and we can have a meeting. Once Melissa has a chance to get with John, she can schedule a meeting, and we can let you know when that is.
Okay. So, I don't know, did we, I don't think, oh, goals. We still have to approve goals, so we ought to approve goals.
And then you'll have the two pieces of legislation for the contract with Shook and the OWDA resolution.
That's already on there, isn't it? OWDA is on there.
Yeah, that one's on there.
Yeah.
And you are, the Energy Board will be ready with the solar, right?
It should be.
And they're, but they will definitely have their annual report, as well, planning, okay? March 21st, see what's on there. Just again, if you're, if one of your commissions is scheduled, I'm sure you're aware of that. So, okay, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Can I just?
Oh, excuse me.
Well, we don't have to pick dates yet, but I want to make sure that that work session on the municipal broadband.
I thought we decided we were going to talk about it at the retreat, that we've got to get the goals.
Before we, okay, that's fine. And then, I also, you know, I know we've talked about it before, but maybe it's, it would be good to talk about it again with the treasures report and why we lose money. And so, you know.
Melissa, can you answer that?
I mean, it doesn't have to be right now, but, you know, either Rachel or.
What do you mean, why we lose money?
So, you know, this, in 2015, we lost, we lost 141,000, and.
That actually, the fund balance went down, and us was actually lost.
I'd have to look at the.
Well, it probably has to do with the balance of fees that we're paying.
Yeah, I'd have to, I honestly don't know how, how she puts that together, so I'd have to, I'd have to look at it. She, she takes it straight from the bank statements. And, I mean, our, our money is, you know, spread into a couple of different places, so I'd have to, I'd have to look at it.
Right, and I understand.
From a fund, you know, from a fund perspective, to understand that.
Okay. Because I know, you know, we've, we've been told about the limits, and, you know, in terms of what municipalities can fund, but, I don't know, it just kills me that, you know, we've got millions in the bank and we're making very little interest or losing money. And I just want to make sure that we're.
Do we want, do we want to ask Rachel to come to either the March 7th or the March 21st meeting? I would say the March 21st, just looking at the, do we want to?
We've been discussing this for years.
I know. So Judy.
I don't understand it either.
I know. I mean, I hear things are supposed to change and whatever. I don't know. It'd just be nice to know what the prospects are, you know.
Judy?
I think we're losing less than we want.
Yeah, we are. I mean.
That's true.
Judy. Yeah, the 21st. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of litigation with our solicitor present.
I so move.
Second. Second.
Winter.
Yes.
How should.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Counselor.